Okay, folks, good evening, everybody. Counselor colleagues and staff and those who are watching and planning on participating. We're here for our public hearing, our virtual public hearing on case 21162. This is secondary suites and backyard suites. So I want to thank everybody for joining us for this virtual public hearing. The order of events for this hearing will be similar to any other. Just ask people to mute if they're not speaking, getting some background. We'll start with the staff presentation. There is no applicant for this case, so after we hear from staff, we will go to the public hearing speakers list. In order to have signed up as a speaker, the deadline was 4:30 the day prior to the hearing. I have the final list of speakers, and I'll be calling the speakers in that order. We asked all speakers to remain on mute until your name is called. Once called, you can unmute your phone, and you will have five minutes to speak. Once you've completed your comment, please re-mute your phone, and you can leave the meeting by hanging up your phone. These meetings are webcast, so you can view the rest of the meeting via the link on halifax.ca. Now, Phoebe is our clerk, and Phoebe will be the timekeeper. She is a ruthless and effective keeper of the time, so people will have five minutes to speak. And Phoebe will give a 30-second notice before the time expires. I will make the ultimate judgment if people go on. We'll try not to cut people off in mid-sentence, but we ask people, since we have a number of speakers, to observe that five-minute time limit. I'll ask Phoebe, is there anything else that I've missed?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor. I think you got it all.
Okay. So we're going to begin our public hearing with the staff presentation, and I understand that Jillian McCollum will be leading us with the staff presentation. Good evening, Jillian.
Good evening, Jillian.
Good evening. I'll just wait for the presentation to load up.
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor. I think you got it all.
All right. So, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors.
Jillian, why am I hearing myself five seconds later?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that one or more of our public speakers may have the webcast going at the same time, so if we could just ask perhaps that the members of the public that are on the line mute themselves by hitting star six, or alternatively turn the sound off on the webcast, and you can just follow along using the post action.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jillian.
Go ahead.
All right. Okay. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. My name is Jill McCollum. I'm a planner with regional planning, and tonight I'm here to discuss the proposed amendments to the regional municipal planning strategy and community land use bylaws for secondary and backyard suites. Next slide, please. So first, I'll start with explaining what secondary and backyard suites are. So a secondary suite is a separate dwelling unit that's completely contained within a home. They're often referred to as in-law suites or basement apartments. A backyard suite is a separate freestanding building, either built over a top and accessory structure like a garage, or simply on their own. They're often referred to as granny suites, carriage flats, or could be in the form of a tiny house. Next slide. So on March 27, 2018, Regional Council initiated the process to consider amendments to the planning documents to simplify, consolidate, and remove barriers to the development of secondary suites and backyard suites. The initiation report included several key considerations. They touched on allowing the use throughout the municipality, limiting where regulations were required, limiting where additional parking was required, considering the use within two-unit and townhouse dwellings in addition to single-unit dwellings, and looking at an incentive program. Next slide. So why allow secondary backyard suites? So there's several benefits associated with secondary backyard suites. This includes increasing the overall density of an area without affecting the overall build form of the neighborhood. I think we have an older version of the presentation here, so I can touch on this slide here. So there was a recommendation report that was brought to Regional Council on January 28th. Based on discussion and debate, Council did request that we come back with a supplementary report that looked at considering backyard suites accessory to single-unit dwellings and two-unit dwellings and townhouse units in addition to the single-unit dwellings, so that the backyard suites and the single-unit dwellings were considered under the same abilities. And through this report, too, we also started to receive several concerns and comments regarding the proposed minimum lot area for backyard suites, which were also received as part of this as well. Next slide. So now I'll get to the reasons as to why we were considering secondary and backyard suites. So there's several benefits associated with secondary backyard suites. These include increasing the overall density of an area without affecting the overall build form of the neighborhood. This includes hidden or gentle density. The secondary backyard suites also provide more opportunity for rental units, so this not only will potentially increase rental units to combat our less than 1% vacancy rate, but also allows for rental units in areas where there's traditionally little to no rental supply. This is especially true in some of our more rural areas of the municipality. These proposed amendments will also provide a consistent approach for the municipality in regards to secondary and backyard suites. So should you wish to develop a secondary unit in Fall River, the same type of rules or approach will be the same in Dartmouth, will be the same in Bedford, will be the same in Tantalon. The secondary and backyard suites also create opportunities for more affordable homeownership and supplementary income for homeowners. It also provides accommodation for aging parents and adult children, and allows individuals to downsize and age in place in existing neighborhoods. Increasing secondary backyard suites was listed as a target in the Hosing and Homelessness Affordable Housing Work Plan, or sorry, in the Housing and Homelessness Partnership Five-Year Strategic Plan. And then the HRM Affordable Housing Work Plan also discusses the removal of barriers to the development of secondary and backyard suites. Next slide. So several of our community plans do permit some form of secondary suite. It's generally used the term auxiliary dwelling. However, as shown in this slide, the process and ability to consider a secondary suite will differ depending on your specific zone or plan area. There is a bit more of a consistent approach for backyard suites. Most of our land use bylaws do not consider the use. Of the 23 different land use bylaws, only three consider the use. One of them is Center Plan Package A, so to verify that. Next slide, please. So during the fall of 2018, staff engaged the public regarding the proposed amendments through various forms of public engagement. The primary form of engagement was through an online survey, which was live for 78 days, and received nearly 2,500 responses. We also reached out to 41 community groups, mainly residential associations, and had requests to meet in person with four groups. We also received numerous phone calls and emails throughout the process. The majority of respondents were in favor of allowing secondary and backyard suites, and the most common reasons for being in favor included the opportunity to house a family member or to allow aging in place, was to make housing more affordable and to provide additional income for homeowners, and to increase rental opportunities. And while the majority of the comments were in favor, there were still noted concerns, including impacts to parking and traffic, property standards and nuisance, the impact to property values, possible conversion to short-term rentals such as Airbnb, and the cost associated with development and how that would impact affordability. Next slide. So as noted, we did go to council with a report in January 28th for first reading. We were asked to return with a supplementary report. So today, we're here to discuss that supplementary report and the amendments to the land use bylaws reflecting the proposed amendments and the requested changes from January. So the proposed amendments would allow secondary and backyard suites accessory to single-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, and townhouse dwellings. It is important to note that the proposed amendments would only allow one or either allow a secondary suite or a backyard suite, not both. The proposed amendments will apply to all areas of HRM with the exception of Center Plan Package A. I'll also note, too, that there are some areas that are in existing development agreement, and so depending on the wording of that development agreement or the age of the development agreement, these amendments may or may not apply to those lands. Next slide. So in regards to secondary suites, the built form requirements will need to comply with the requirements of the main dwelling. So this includes setback, height, lot coverage. In regards to size, a secondary suite can be no larger than 80 square meters. This size comes from the provincial building code that already includes specific regulations regarding secondary suites and has already established that size. Next slide. In regards to backyard suites, the backyard suite must conform with the requirements of an accessory dwelling, such as a garage. Where a land use bylaw allows for larger accessory buildings, the backyard suite can be no larger than 90 square meters. However, where a land use bylaw does require a smaller accessory building, the size of that, that's within the land use bylaw, will apply. Next slide. The size requirements for backyard suites will differ slightly for lands within the regional center. While the maximum floor area will still be 90 square meters, the allowable footprint can be no larger than 60 square meters. This is reflective of the direction of the Center Plan Package B at the time of drafting these amendments. Next slide. And so while some of our bylaws do allow accessory dwellings on an adjacent lot, a backyard suite must be on the same lot as the main dwelling. This is to avoid any confusion as to whether it's a backyard suite or whether it's a main dwelling or not. Further, in cases where an internal townhouse unit, in cases such as internal townhouse units, where a main dwelling does not have a side yard, the backyard suite must have unobstructed access to a public street. So this not only ensures access in cases of emergency, but also ensures ease of access for more simple considerations such as visitors or deliveries. And beyond the size and built form requirements of the proposed amendments, we're not proposing further changes to our land use bylaw provisions. So for example, there's no minimum lot area requirement specific to a secondary or backyard suite. Instead, we would be relying on existing lot coverage requirements to prevent overdevelopment. Also, additional parking is not included as a requirement in these amendments as well. Next slide. So before I finish my presentation, I should note that our work regarding secondary and backyard suites does not end this evening. Staff have been working on an information sheet that will explore, that will provide information regarding the steps required for obtaining a permit, including frequently asked questions, and these will be used for people who are interested in developing a secondary or backyard suite. Staff will also work with our colleagues, are still, are working with our colleagues with the Housing and Homelessness Partnership to explore financial incentives to encourage or require affordability when developing secondary or backyard suites. And we hope to further discuss this in a future report that will explore financial incentives for affordable housing. And as council is well aware, the Center Plan Package B will be forthcoming to council, will be coming to council in the upcoming months. Through their public engagement and analysis, changes to the built form provisions for main dwelling and accessory buildings may change, which will impact secondary and backyard suites. Next slide. So to conclude, staff recommend that Regional Council adopt the proposed amendments to the regional municipal planning strategy and all land use bylaws to allow secondary suites and backyard suites accessory to single-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, or townhouse dwellings. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian, very much. I think we have a couple of questions. Just ask people again if you're on the phone to please mute until time comes. Feedback. Counselor Stretch?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and thank you, Jillian, for the presentation. Your Worship, are you looking for the motion first before questions?
No, just looking for clarification of staff presentation.
All right. Clarification. And thank you, Jillian, for mentioning Fall River. I appreciate that as a representative here in District One. At the same time, you spoke about our decisions today affecting all residents, all properties across HRM, and I think that approach is the right one. I did have a question relating to restrictive covenants. You talked about certain development agreement considerations. If there is a subdivision that exists now with restrictive covenants, how would that be affected by our decision tonight?
To the Counselor, through the Mayor. Restrictive covenants are something that the municipality doesn't enforce in general. That is a separate agreement between property owners that the municipality is not involved in.
Okay. So for clarity, if we enable this today, then that means the municipality is saying yes and giving our blessing, but if there is a restrictive covenant in place, that would supersede our decision relating to the local community?
Yeah, depending on the wording of the restrictive covenant, it would supersede the requirements of the land use bylaw.
Okay. And one further question, Your Worship. As it relates to the detached, smaller homes on the existing property, how do we reconcile that with properties that don't have central services? For example, if there is septic system or wells, and Department of Environment, I mean, they have regulations now that restrict, you know, how many, you know, what one property per septic system. Is that something that you've built into this as well?
So to have a backyard suite or a secondary suite, you're still going to need to apply for a building permit, which, if you are in an unsurfaced area, that will include a review from Nova Scotia Environment. And Nova Scotia Environment would require that a qualified professional assess the septic system to see if it's capable of serving both the main dwelling and the secondary unit.
Perfect. Well, it sounds like you're way ahead of my questions, Jillian. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay. Thank you. On clarification, Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jill, for the presentation. Very good, as always. My question is around, you identify there is a setback, but there's not one for backyard suites. Is that correct? Could you clarify that? Is there a setback for the backyard suites?
So setback requirements for backyard suites would apply, accessory building requirements would apply for backyard suites. So where, whatever the setback requirement is for an accessory building for a garage, that would apply to the backyard suite as well.
Right. So you can't build it right on the property line, the secondary suite, correct?
I will note, yeah, apologies through the Mayor to the Counselor. I will note that there are some bylaws, mainly Dartmouth and Halifax, that do not require rear and side yard setbacks for accessory buildings in the land use bylaw. However, the building code may require certain setbacks depending on the building material, depending on the location of any windows, so it's, I won't say that 100%. There's no chance that it could be built on the property line, but there's, it would be required for a specific review under the building code requirements.
Okay. I'll speak to that later, Mayor, when we give our comments. Thank you, Jill. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Jill. Great to see you. Three really quick clarification questions. One is with the public access. So I'm just wondering, when you think of backyard suites and potential of that, so when you say public access to the sidewalk, does that mean that from the street to the entrance of the secondary suite, you can access it? Or could it also mean you could access it through, say, the house attached to the, or not even attached, but the house that's also on the property? I'm just trying to understand, when you say public access, what is the limitations on that? If you can give a little bit more details on the affordability piece with the province, really, I'm wondering what those conversations has been and what are some of the potential ideas of how to actually address that? Because I know it's very complex, and especially working with the province, so I'm just curious on what have those conversations been? And then also, if this was to be approved and we move forward, we also have bylaw M200. I think it might change to M201. I'm not exactly sure. But I know that we'll be requiring landlords to register units, so will backyard suites also be included with that register, registry? And yeah, that's it for me, and I'll have comments when we discuss.
Jillian?
Through the Mayor to the Counselor. So in regards to access, it needs to be unobstructed access. So if you have a backyard suite, you need to be able to access the public street without having to go through the main dwelling or going over someone else's property. So as noted, that mainly will impact internal townhouse units that don't back up nether public streets. In regards to conversations regarding affordability, I don't, we're still having conversations with the province, so I don't want to go into too much detail regarding the conversations that are taking place there. But I mean, potential programs could include a grant program or potentially a forgivable loan, but these are just things that are still being discussed with the province. And in regards to the M200 registration, if the secondary or backyard suite is being rented through a lease, so if it's being, if it's being habitated by somebody who isn't a family member, or, you know, there's lease involved, then yes, they will be required to register.
Okay. Great. Really, really quick follow-up on the public access. So I'm thinking of accessibility. So if someone has a backyard suite and they're leasing it to another person, they would need to make sure that there's a clear path from the public sidewalk to that unit, and it couldn't be, it just, you know, if it's a grass, could it be, if you have a grass backyard and you're supposed to be able to walk to the sidewalk from that, or, you know, you have to have some kind of path that makes it easy to access if there's, I'm not, I don't know if I'm explaining it correctly, but I think you might, you're shaking it, so you might understand where I'm trying to get at.
Sorry, there's a delay when I click unmute. Through the Mayor to the Counselor. There's nothing in the proposed amendments that would require the quality of the passage. It's just as long as there's space, as long as there's space between the main dwelling and the next dwelling to allow for passage, but it's not, does it require it to be paved or to be cleared?
Okay. I'll speak to that when we.
Or it can be grassed.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cleary?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, thank you, Ms. McCollum, and you may be able to answer this, or it may require legal to come in, but, so two questions. The first one is around, and it kind of gets into, I guess, tenancy rather than land use. So for example, if in the bylaw we wanted to only have property owners to rent out a backyard suite or a secondary suite, is that something that's within our authority or jurisdiction?
Through the Mayor to the Counselor, no, that's not, that's not something that's within our jurisdiction, is requiring a property owner.
Okay. And the second question, then, this comes out a lot when people ask about, especially because things like short-term rentals via the platform Airbnb are controversial and have taken a lot of units out of the long-term rental marketplace. Do we have the authority to allow or disallow a particular platform for renters of any unit, short-term or long-term? Could we, for example, write in the bylaw that we can't rent out on Airbnb?
So through the Mayor to the Counselor, I do apologize. I'm not sure if I got your question completely. Are you wondering, was your question if the secondary backyard suite could be used as an Airbnb? Or if it could be advertised as an Airbnb?
Yeah. Well, or if we have the authority or the jurisdiction to say you cannot advertise it or rent it out on Airbnb?
So regarding advertising on a specific platform, we can't regulate that. However, the use of a short-term rental, which is what Airbnbs are generally associated with, a short-term rental is seen as a separate use than a residential use. So we do have authority to include regulations on that.
But at this time, looking through the land use bylaw, you're not suggesting at this point regulating short-term versus long-term use?
Through, through these proposed amendments, we're relying on the existing provisions in our land use bylaws. So our existing provisions in the land use bylaws do touch on the borders and lodgers, which is similar to a short-term rental. But in those, yeah, once again, each of our bylaws, the language does change. Generally, that for those borders and lodgers, that they're only required where the primary occupant lives in the unit, so there would need to be a primary occupant before it could be used for a border and lodger. So the secondary suite on its own could not just be used as a place for a short-term rental.
And that would depend on the area within HRM, depending on the land use bylaw that they're under?
We would need to look at the specific wording in each bylaws. Some of our bylaws do touch on tourist accommodation specifically. Some of our zones are more permissive zoning as well, that do allow for tourist accommodation use as well as residential use, so it will really depend on the land use bylaw and the zone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Kirsten?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jillian, certainly not only for the presentation, but all of the extensive, detailed, background work you and staff have done on getting this here tonight. My point of clarification is, with one little quick comment first, it's great to see the largest percentage of our residents in the presentation that you gave us support this process moving forward. You did, in fact, though, mention, I think it was on slide seven, that there were some concerns expressed, and I didn't get a chance to write them down. I think there were three, but you certainly expressed or mentioned that there were a few that expressed concern about traffic and property tax. Can you address those in terms of, you know, I've had some emails about traffic as well, and I'd just like staff's clarification on what they feel, whether or not it is a legitimate concern. Thank you.
Through the Mayor to the Counselor, staff do not feel that traffic will be substantially impacted by the proposed amendments. Well, the proposed amendments, well, region-wide, we don't expect that there will be a large influx of secondary backyard suite being developed throughout the city, because, you know, there's different steps regarding, requiring, you know, the permit process is extensive. There's also a cost associated with developing these units as well. In regards to property values, we did speak with the Property Value Service Corporation, who, you know, supplies the property assessment for properties within Nova Scotia. They didn't feel as though the proposed amendments, as they are, would impact property assessments as a whole. It's when you start getting into actually doing the development on your property that your property assessment would change.
Yeah, that's great. So there's no, there's no study, no, there's no study or no evidence that in fact would lower your property valuation?
You're on mute. Jillian, you're on mute. Jillian?
Apologies through the Mayor to the Counselor. There's nothing within the research that we've done that has shown that property values would be reduced.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Counselor Othert?
Thank you, Mayor, and Jill. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to have to go back to where Counselor Stretch was for a minute, because restrictive covenants. You mentioned, Steve brought that up, which is great. Now, my understanding was that restrictive covenants are neither recognized nor enforced by HRM. But, and you said that they weren't enforced, but if a restrictive covenant was in place, you said, well, that would supersede this. I don't think that's accurate, because I don't think HRM recognizes restrictive covenants. So I need you to clarify that.
Through the Mayor to the Counselor. So yes, it is.
Sure. Sorry. And then the next thing.
Through the Mayor to the Counselor, yes, it is true.
And then the next thing. We've got an echo. I'm sorry. You go ahead and answer. I'll be quiet.
Okay. Thank you.
No, go ahead. It's through the Mayor to the Counselor. Yes, you are correct. We don't enforce restrictive covenants. And I mean, this may be better addressed through our solicitor, but it would be up to a lawyer to assess whether or not the restrictive covenant, if it's on a property that's between the property owners, to ensure that that stays in place, and they would need to involve their own lawyers to ensure that it stays in force. While the municipality doesn't enforce it ourselves, it doesn't mean that it doesn't still fall on the property.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. It does look like Counselor Whitman is not in the meeting at the moment. If he wishes to vote on the matter again, we need to pause the meeting in order to allow him to reconnect. I do have IT on the phone. I do have IT on the phone with him. Trying to connect with him right now to see what's the issue. Apologies.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, sorry, Lindell, I just got kicked out really quickly. I came right back, but I also got kicked out for a sec, so I'm not sure it happened to councillor Whitman as well.
Okay, so Phoebe, we'll take a pause then, you'll let us know when we can reconvene?
And to clarify with the legal, I believe we need to be present to hear the public and not the staff presentation.
To, to the mayor, to councillor Hensby, my understanding is that we do need to have all members of council through the staff presentation and questions of clarification, as well as the public. It has to be the entirety of the meeting in order to be able to, to make the vote.
Okay, so if, if people get kicked out, then please, if you can't use the chat line, then text me on my own device, you all have my text number, so we can make sure that we don't kick anybody out from being part of the discussion. So, Phoebe, are we going to pause while we wait to get councillor Whitman reconnected?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can just put the break screen up for just a moment, and we will connect councillor Whitman either by computer or by phone line, as you mentioned. So just give us a couple of minutes here.
Apparently, Mr. Mayor, he's just messaged that he's still on a second device. So, oh, I think, oh, I think we, anybody there?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, so he, he put in a chat room, having tech issues, watching on one device with no sound, listening on another device with about a 10-second delay. I don't think that's recommended for anyone, including certainly the people that are, are listening on their line, watching TV at the same time.
Yeah, we can only do what we can do. Phoebe, you let us know?
Okay, I guess he's here, according to the chat room.
Okay, Phoebe? Councillor Whitman, you're back?
Believe councillor Whitman is back, yes.
Okay, let's, councillor Othert, I think, was asking questions.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. So, so Jill, I'm sorry, and I might have to get a legal opinion on this as well. Restrictive covenants, if, if the city doesn't recognize them and doesn't enforce them, I don't know how it could override our, our rules. So I'd like to clarify on that. And then the, you also mentioned about there are some areas where this won't apply, even though we want to have a rule for all districts, if there's a DA in place. Well, much of my community has DAs, requires a DA. So I need to understand from either you, and I see Josh there. I need to understand both restrictive covenants and DAs, please.
Okay, who wants that? Gillian or Josh? Josh? Gillian or?
Mr. Mayor, to the councillor. Essentially, restricted covenants are civil agreements, are private agreements. So the land use bylaw or the building code are legislation that we would enforce. But a restrictive covenant is basically a private agreement that, that a group of people have made. So it might be in a particular development, everyone might agree. I think one of the old ones that you used to see was that no one was allowed to have a clothing line, for example. But it was just something that if your neighbors want to take you to court and get you to take down your clothing line, they could. But it wasn't something that our enforcement staff would ever investigate or lay a charge for.
Councillor Othert, you okay?
Well. Sorry, I hit mute again. Well, yes and no, except if there's a restrictive covenant in place. I go to the city and they say, yes, you can build a secondary suite or a backyard suite. The neighbors get together and try and take you to court for doing it. While the city's saying it's okay, the developer's saying it isn't. That seems a little confusing to me, first of all. So it would appear to me that we, as the city, making this law, do not care if the restrictive covenant's in place or not. As far as we are concerned, if we pass this, that these suites and secondary units, rather, are allowed. And secondly, I need to understand the DA situation, please. Thank you, thanks, Josh. Thank you, thanks, Josh.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, a development agreement is something that we would enforce. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Gillian. Go ahead, Gillian.
Apologies, there is a bit of delay. Through the mayor to the councillor, so a development agreement, depending on the specific wording, it's, will dictate whether or not these proposed amendments would apply. So if there's wording in there that says, that goes back to the existing bylaw, or that says the, the provisions of the bylaw will change, will still apply as amended from time to time, then these, then the proposed amendments would then apply to those development agreements. Where the development agreement is very specific about the land, land use, and doesn't go back to the land use bylaw, or doesn't include that as amended from time to time provision, then they wouldn't impact those lands.
Okay. Councillor Nichol?
Thank you, yes, and I've said it before when we discussed this, none of this, none of these amendments are going to make existing illegal units become legal at the end of the day, but it's going to facilitate a way forward. You know, a lot of people are in favor of it, because secondary suites means nanny suites. They, you know, and they want to do that. But I know that there's the bylaw simplification process that I had been waiting for, and I just wondered when that could kick in as to, you know, why we're doing this now as opposed to in tandem with that? And if there's something that happened between that, that created this urgency to do it as a blanket, you know, I, I might think that, given the current pandemic, there might be a reason there where people, you know, have concerns about long-term care facilities, and perhaps that's what sort of, you know, creating the, the current urgency. But, you know, I, I also, the other thing is, I've asked, been asked whether these properties will continue to be R1-zoned, like, because if it's going to be two units, and I'm referring more to the secondary suites, not the, but on the, on the backyard suites, people are concerned that they will become Airbnbs. And when is there, isn't there another report that's coming in that regard?
Gillian?
Yep. Through the mayor to the councillor. The, yeah, so the report regarding short-term rentals, there was a notice of motion regarding that today. So that's coming to council on September 22nd. And in regards to why we are looking at, at these proposed amendments now, part of it has to do with the, with the Affordable Housing Work Plan and the targets of the Five-Year Strategic Plan of the Housing and Homelessness Partnership. And these are also, this has also been a policy that's been in our regional plan as well, the 2014 regional plan, to look at secondary suites specifically. So it's following that direction as well.
And the question about the, the properties with secondary suites will continue to be Zoned R1?
So the R1-zone will still apply to the property. Just within an R1-zone, you'll now be able to have a main dwelling and a secondary or backyard suite.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Councillor Hensby?
Well, thank you much, Mr. Mayor. Could you ask Gillian to clarify in regards to onsite septic and wells? What is requirement if anybody wants to put additional units on their property? What is the provisions for adequate capacity of the septic or well system? Because I have some questions on that, I want that point clarified publicly, please.
Right, Jill?
So through the mayor to the councillor, in regards to septic system, you will need to, as noted earlier, you'll still, you'll still need to apply for a building permit to develop a secondary or backyard suite. And as part of that review, we'll make sure that, that will, the permit will be reviewed through Nova Scotia Environment, if it's in an unserviced area. Nova Scotia Environment will require that a qualified professional assess the existing septic system to ensure that it can adequately support the secondary dwelling as well. For wells, that's more of a responsibility of a property owner to ensure that there's adequate water on their property to service themselves. Nova Scotia Environment generally stays out of that.
Okay, thank you, councillor, thank you, Gillian. I see, I see no other questions of clarification, so there is no applicant. So we will, at this point, open the public hearing. Any member of the public who has registered with the clerk's office will be given five minutes to address the topic. When called to speak, each speaker is asked to begin by giving your name and the community in which you reside. For those who are coming in from home, we, Phoebe, can you just explain again? We want people to stay on mute until they're called, correct?
That's right, Mr. Mayor, we could ask folks to just remain on mute until their name is called. And then they can press star six to unmute themselves. After they're finished giving their five minutes and having any questions of clarification, they can sign out of the meeting and they can continue to watch along on the webcast.
Okay. Okay, so we thank people. I also just want to explain to folks that the law is that councillors have to hear all of the public hearings. So I'm going to be taking some breaks, so the councillors can stretch and take a bylaw break, and we'll probably have our first break sometime around 7:30. I'm going to read the first five names on the list so that they can be prepared. The first five on the list are Tamardina, Ted Vaughan, Bill Campbell, Gerry Post, and Mary Lynn Saturday. We'll begin with Tamardina. Are you with us?
Yep.
Good evening. So is Tamara or Tama, Tamardina with us? If you're on mute, it's star six, is it, Phoebe?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, it should be star six. Just want to remind callers as well that you should be listening through the telephone rather than listening through the webcast. There could be a delay with the webcast. So for any members of the public, grateful if you could listen in on the phone for your turn to speak.
Okay, so the first one on the list again is Tamardina. If we miss somebody, we'll come back and hook them in afterwards. We'll go to the second name on the list. Ted Vaughan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, Mr. Vaughan, thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, your worship, it's very nice to talk to you today in council. I had an opportunity to work with your, your late father, and it was quite an honor, working for Cabinet Secretary back in the day. I, I want to just touch briefly on clarity and transparency. And I realize that some of the city center plan has not had the discussion with the public, the way it probably was laid out, some of the plans, because of COVID-19. But clearly, some of the questions we hear tonight, about restricted covenants, overlap a topic that I'd like to cover. In particular, I'm looking at your established residential special areas. And in particular, as outlined, as outlined as a proposed heritage conservation district, Westmount exists, identified in these plans. But the challenge with Westmount is we don't have a covenant in place. Rather, we're in a, a, a very unusual situation, where we are covered under the bylaw. So if the city center plan is the replacement for these bylaws, the bylaw sets out for, for Westmount, it even defines what a front yard is, which gives you an idea of the complexity of the Radburn design and the garden center, the garden city movement that created Westmount. Very unusual layout, especially for the Peninsula of Halifax. So the bylaw continues to set meets and bounds of what can be built in terms of an accessory building. And some people believe that this is the protection that is present to help residents of Westmount understand that some of these uses cannot be permitted. However, within the bylaw, there is further definition of Westmount, which eliminates a significant portion of Westmount from these restrictions. So my concern is that the residents do not have an adequate understanding of the protection that should be in place for a proposed heritage conservation district, as identified in, in some of the documents. So we need a clear stitching of what meets and bounds or restrictions are within the bylaw, back into the city center plan, so that we can have a full understanding of the impact that this will have on our subdivision. It's a very unusual layout. And also, I, I want to say that I appreciate the difficulties of conveying your plans to the public, and how easy Facebook is to use. But it may not touch some of the residents that we have in this subdivision in a way that's particularly efficient. So with that, your worship, I just want to clarify that this is really about clarity and transparency of what can be done in Westmount under this. And I don't think the support is present in Westmount to make some of these changes that are proposed. I would ask the council and your worship to consider defining and clarifying what can be done and stitching this bylaw restrictions and attaching a clear meaning, because right now, we're talking about an accessory building, and it may not apply to what the city center plan puts forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughan. I'm going to go back and see if Tamardina is with us, who was the first one on the list?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, how are you?
Great, fabulous, I'm great, how are you?
I'm good, give us your name and where you reside, and the floor is yours for five minutes.
Thank you, I'm Tamardina in District Eight, shout out to Lindell, my councillor. I want to thank Gillian and her team for being clear and helpful throughout this, and Gillian in particular has been available, responsive, and informative with me. While the spirit of the secondary and backyard suite that's been proposed and widely accepted needs to be reflected in the subsequent policy and processes, and perhaps this makes most sense incorporated in the Plan B provisions. Right now, there's no formal proposal and therefore no significant public debate regarding permitting financial incentives and/or changes to property taxes, nor has there been any public conversation about regulations related to Halifax Water and Nova Scotia Power. I understand that there's some behind-the-scenes talk, but it's not really part of the public conversation or what's at the forefront in the councillor's mind. Without thorough consideration of these practical and/or explicit directives from city council, a great idea in theory could become accessible in reality with cumulative costs for the average homeowner. I understand, like I said from Gillian, that her team are preparing an additional report, but it needs to be an explicit priority more than a consideration, and it needs to be stressed by council. As of now, there's no incentive program proposed to either help property owners with illegal suites become legal, and/or to help property owners looking to create secondary suites to do so legally. Since many homeowners are interested and perhaps desperate to supplement their income, the city must recognize the economic circumstances of those most eager to take advantage, especially during these uncertain times. The cost of permits and code compliance, coupled with rising material costs, make the project inaccessibly prohibitive or can. While developers are granted incentives to create affordable housing, there's nothing in place for the average homeowner, who disproportionately takes a greater risk and pays more to create the same or even better resource. Just as the issue of reducing costs for the homeowner needs to be integrated in the overall plan, the issue of height restriction needs to be addressed explicitly. At the moment, height restriction for at least the peninsula caps the accessory building height, which is the reference. height, which is the reference for the backyard suite, to 14 feet, which means no possibility for a two-story building. Two-story buildings in many cases would decrease the footprint by taking advantage of vertical space and would allow homeowners to keep a garage by building a suite on top. I'm ignorant of the rationale behind height restrictions and imagine there's some logical merit to them. However, some creative adaptation can ensure adherence to governing principles and allow reasonable height, for example, relatively to the main dwelling. An accessory building does not reflect the needs of a small home or the types of designs being created, fabricated for tiny homes, and I hope this can be included in Plan B. One of the most promising aspects of this initiative is the site-specific possibilities. The nature of the backyard suites in particular can reflect the uniqueness of each property and imagination of the design team. These small units could add character to many neighbourhoods and fulfill the promise of affordability, density, and innovation, only if the practical application reflects the original objectives. Otherwise, only the privileged will benefit. I would first sort of suggest that authorized permit officers, building inspectors, and planners work collaboratively in an ad hoc committee to help the city transition through the first two years following approval. In another point, allowing both a secondary suite and backyard suites on the same property are not being proposed, and the rationale as to why is unclear. I'm guessing that it's about amenity and service increases. At the moment, very large condo and apartment buildings are being built that are more significantly affecting traffic, transit, parking, et cetera. This is an opportunity for the city to empower its homeowners to be actively involved in the shaping of the city, and as residents, they have a more personal investment. For this reason, I ask that council reconsider this restriction. Lastly, in relation to regulations, say for short-term lodging or rentals, I stress that council approach this with honey rather than vinegar. Residents and average homeowners in particular need to be invited to uphold the greatest good of the city and to participate voluntarily rather than punitively. The governing ideas of any policy or bylaw need to bring out the best in its constituency, and that is done through education, reason, and incentive. There is a noteworthy difference between ordinary people trying to get by and those with an excess of housing making the most money they can. In addition, COVID has really put a damper on short-term rentals, and I think many have learned from that firsthand. Again, I want to thank Gillian and her team and the council for hearing me out.
Time is complete.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dina. Next is Bill Campbell, followed by Gerry Post. Mr. Campbell, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. My name is Bill Campbell. I've been hired by more than 150 residents of Westmount subdivision, the area that Ted Vaughan just spoke of, to assist them in responding to these amendments. For those who don't know me, my credentials, I've been working 30 years in planning, former County of Halifax, the City of Halifax, manager of planning in the Western Region of HRM, and then Director of Planning, and then interim President of the Waterfront Development Corporation. So I did spend quite a bit of time in Halifax over my lifetime. I very much appreciate the complexity of the issues being dealt with, and staff and your committees have attempted to be comprehensive, but I'm afraid, in my review of the information and informing the public, there are considerable issues that haven't been addressed, and I want to address those. The first one is that the analysis of how other municipalities have regulated these types of units. The 2018 report states that several municipalities permit secondary suites. However, there's no detail and examination provided in that report nor subsequent to provide more comprehensive information. For example, backyard suites in the majority of municipalities that I have researched do permit the backyard suites, and most of my comments are related to those, but they have vigorous design standards to ensure compatibility with adjacent structures. Your proposals do not have those. Discretionary permitting systems are in place where notice to residents within a certain distance is required for each permit. That's your proposals do not include those. There are appeal processes in those municipalities that allow these for their refusal and approval. Yours do not have any appeal process. Basically, you're allowing backyard suites and the secondary suites by right without any involvement of adjacent residences. Explaining why that's critical. The sketches in your reports and the advertisements are accurate for Calgary, where those sketches were originated, but they are not for what HRM is proposing. For example, in Calgary, there are very strict design guidelines and appealable permits. In the proposals before us that you were considering, there is no such control. For example, in HRM, regardless of the existing adjacent buildings, a person would be able to build a 14-foot-high warehouse-type structure because it only has to comply with non-habitable space accessory controls. I believe that habitable structures should have different controls than, say, a garage or a shed. And in the Centre Plan Package B, which is considering including these, that height capacity extends to 18 feet, so there would be an 18-foot-high potential warehouse-type structure. The resources and time are not available to examine all the municipalities, but we examined Calgary, Red Deer, Edmonton, Surrey, Chilliwack, Lethbridge, Victoria, and Winnipeg, and all allow secondary and backyard suites. Most, the majority of these require discretionary permit system, and they have detailed design requirements. And they all require parking, of which your proposals do not. And this information was not available, and that's one of the main issues. This lack of information on what other municipalities do and did, on the contrary, implies the opposite, that these uses are widely permitted without much impact and control, but that's not correct. Also, from an affordability perspective, which is a very laudable goal for the municipality to have, increasing affordability, there is wrong and misleading information. Your reports state that up to 20% of the housing units, rental housing units in Vancouver and Edmonton are secondary units. That's not true. For some reason, in doing the analysis, the people compared wrong jurisdictions, it's only 7%, so that is a much less impact on affordability.
Thirty seconds.
The result is that everyone, council, your committees, and the public have been led to believe that can affect affordability, when I do not believe it will be a substantial Some of the impacts that haven't been examined are an accessory use is normally considered rather a benign structure. On the other hand, a structure that is inhabited 24 hours a day has much more potential for making the backyard environments a completely different experience, especially when it's a
Time is complete.
It is Airbnb or a residence for six university students. The attic space of garages is not economically viable, but it certainly will be economically viable with making it a habitable space.
Mr. Campbell, please wrap up. We're past, well past time.
Yes, I just have a few minutes, just a, no, no, a few minutes, just a few seconds. The one element that is disconcerting is that the reports refer this as a gentle density effort. If it was in the same process that Calgary and Edmonton had, and all of the municipalities that I mentioned, where they have permit systems at very detailed design standards, and they had appealable permits, I would agree with that. But there's no such proposal here. It is by right, without any input by adjacent residences or any concern of design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Next is Gerry Post, followed by Mary Lynn Satterley and Matt Henninger. Mr. Post, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am, Your Worship.
Nice to hear from you.
Yes, good to be on the agenda, and thanks for giving me the opportunity, and members of council. So my name is Gerry Post. I live in District Seven, so Wade's my councillor. And for, and some of you know that, I use a wheelchair. So I'm going to speak to this proposal from the perspective of a person with a disability. Right off the top, I and many of my friends in the disability committee fully support this initiative. I think you are to be commended, as well as staff. You know, 30.4% of our population in Nova Scotia has at least one form of a disability. And if you're a senior, it's 43%. So, and the reason why, you know, I support this is hopefully to improve the supply of affordable and accessible housing, which is nearly impossible to find in the city today, and it has enormous and deep implications. I have one friend, for example, who I met while I was in hospital six years ago. He's a young man in his mid-20s, in a wheelchair, and he lives in a seniors' home because he cannot find affordable, accessible housing in our community. And the implications of that are enormous, dealing with loneliness, depression, mental health, and what have you. So it's really important we work on that. And as well as councillor Nichol has indicated, the whole notion of aging in place has become so important, especially during these COVID days. You know, when you look at the Stats Canada data, in Canada, 81% of persons who died of COVID were persons with disability living in long-term care facilities. We want to keep people as home as long as they can, and that's where they want to be. So what's really important, obviously, then, is to make sure that whatever we do here, we ensure that these units are built to an accessible standard. And there are some really nice examples available in BC. They have a whole safe home initiative. And what that means is that the home is visitable, meaning that I can get in and go to the bathroom, and it's adaptable if someone decides to move in. The cost of that is very minimal if it's designed in at the front end. We're talking for a small home, perhaps $500 to $700, so not a lot of money. So I have a few recommendations to enhance this excellent initiative that you have. So one is to perhaps adopt an inclusive design standard for these secondary units. They could be implemented either through a regulation, or it could be incentivized. We've heard already about, you know, the concerns about cost. Perhaps you could waive the development fees for those units that are completely accessible within the community, but at least you could promote that amongst the development industry. The other recommendation is, within the city, at least the Peninsula and Dartmouth, the proposal is to restrict the size of the units to a footprint of 60 square meters for the backyard units. But those are very small units, and it could force things upwards as well. And as well, of course, a 60-square-foot unit must or should be, you know, completely accessible. What I'm recommending here is rather than set a hard limit on square footage, why not look at lot coverage? So that the larger lots in those areas could accommodate a larger single-story unit that is fully accessible. And, well, that's my contribution for this evening. Again, thank you, council and staff, for an excellent initiative here.
Thank you, Gerry. Nice to hear from you, sir. Mary Lynn Satterley, followed by Matt Henninger, and then Stella Lord. Mary Lynn Satterley. We'll try to come back for Ms. Satterley. Matt Henninger, are you with us? Remind folks it's star six to unmute. Is Matt Henninger with us? Or Mary Lynn Satterley? Let's go to another one and come back then. Stella Lord, are you with us, Stella? Phoebe or April, can you help me here?
Mr. Mayor, we are, we don't seem to have Mary Lynn or Matt, but Stella is showing as being in the meeting. Stella, if you can star six to unmute.
We will try to make, give these people a chance to come back. Joanne Nausic is on the list.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Oh, okay. I think we got two, so. I think I hear Stella Lord. We'll go to Stella Lord first, and then we'll come back to Joanne. Stella, you there?
I have to say, it's very confusing if you're on a phone that does have mute on, whether you press the unmute button on your phone and then press star six or not. I tried about three times to get through, so.
Well, we got you now. You go ahead, Stella.
Okay, but you might explain this to people. This may be why people are not getting through, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Stella Lord. I myself live in Fleming Heights in Halifax. I can't remember my district number. Sean Carey is my councillor. I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Society to End Poverty, called CSEP. CSEP is a small organization made up of members from various parts of Nova Scotia, the majority of whom are in HRM, who represent community-based agencies offering direct services or programs for people living in poverty, many of whom are on income assistance and/or living with disabilities, as well as two representatives from first voice organizations who themselves live with disabilities and are living in deep poverty as well. We advocate with all levels of government on issues affecting people in poverty, but in particular those living in deep poverty on provincial income assistance. For the past five years, we have been meeting with Department of Community Services officials advising on issues related to their employment support and income assistance, ESIA, transformation initiatives, while at the same time advocating for deeper transformational changes that would ensure the dignity of the person and reduce the large gap between the market basket measure of poverty, Canada's official poverty line, and what individuals and families are eligible to receive under the ESIA program. So why are we here? We're presenting to these hearings that secondary and backyard suites because affordable housing for people living in deep poverty has reached a crisis point in HRM, where a rental vacancy rate of about 1.2% now means there is little affordable rental housing available for anyone, let alone for anyone living in poverty. Population growth in HRM, along with poor public policy in a number of areas over a number of years, has led to this situation. The list is long. Deteriorating public housing stock, an HRM Centre Plan focused on density at the expense of complete communities, high-end apartment and condo developments with little housing that is really accessible or affordable, a growing short-term rental situation, and lack of effective provincial and municipal regulation, the province's delay in implementing a clear affordable housing strategy despite federal infusion of money, a landlord and tenancy program that provides little room for the voices of tenants to be heard, higher rents in renovated buildings that were once affordable, insecure employment and inadequate federal and provincial income and social security programs that limit a tenant's ability to afford higher rents and lead to arrears, non-payment, or maybe eviction, and the inability to find something else affordable. It is not surprising, then, that despite the federal housing frisk and finding home initiatives, the number of men, women, and children in homeless shelters have been increasing rather than declining in Halifax. I think we all know that on their own, backyard and secondary suites will not resolve all of these problems, but they are likely to help. If so, how? I'm one half of an older couple contemplating downsizing from our family home to a smaller apartment or condo, but a backyard or secondary suite could open up other options for us and others like us. It could make, we could make some changes to our home so we could create a secondary suite, so we have the extra money from rent to pay for snow appearance or gardening, et cetera. Or alternatively, we could cohabit with our extended family in a secondary suite they create, so we can age in place. But will those who have the property and the resources to invest in creating a secondary suite go through all this trouble to rent out to a single individual living in poverty whose total income on income assistance may be as low as $13,000 or $15,000 if they are subsidizing their income with employment, and whose budget allows no more than $500 or $600 a month for rent and utility? and whose budget allows no more than five or six hundred a month for rent and utilities? On the other hand, with a low income person feel comfortable, welcome, or socially included living in a middle-class neighborhood, where they are unlikely to be able to get to know someone who they really relate to or relates to their reality. It would be nice to think that secondary or backyard suites could contribute to the ideals of complete communities and to social inclusion where people with diverse disabilities or abilities, socioeconomic and racial or ethnic backgrounds, including the very poor, are able to interact and socialize on a daily basis and perhaps become friends. But even if we bracket the very real possibility of exclusion through racism and prejudice, is this realistic, given the way suburban neighborhoods in our cities amenities and services are currently configured? To be sure, secondary and backyard suites will increase the vacancy rate somewhat, thereby contributing to stabilization of rents. And they may go some way towards creating more demographically diverse neighborhoods in terms of age, ethnicity, and even income to some extent. But on their own, they are unlikely to create complete communities that include the poor. Nor will they resolve the really big and serious problems currently associated with unaffordable housing and poverty, inadequate income and social security programs, unaffordable, inaccessible, and often unsafe and unhealthy rental housing, and the very real threat today of becoming homeless. To do that, we need stronger federal, provincial, and municipal commitments to reduce poverty that include better public services to serve and support people with various chronic physical health, mental health, and disability conditions, and more collaborative efforts to increase our stock of safer, accessible, affordable housing, including in the nonprofit sector.
Stella, we're gonna have to.
I'm wrapping it up. In the meantime, there's something that this council could do to improve the situation. You could agree to landlord licensing, as advocated for by Acorn Halifax in the agenda for secondary and backyard. You could do more to regulate the short-term rental market. You could raise more money through development fees or taxes to increase investment in nonprofit housing trusts or establishments. You could support proposals to include inclusion rezoning in the H R M charter.
Your worship, this is way off track, your worship.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, there's thirty-five people waiting to speak.
Yeah, I just want to say, though, that if I could, there's been a bit of confusion at the beginning, so I provided some latitude for Stella, but we will have to move ahead. Phoebe, we'll move ahead.
I have just two points to make. Can I do that?
No, I think, if you can do it in ten seconds, Stella.
Okay, I just wanted to say that you could call for provincial action on affordable housing so that complete communities could become a reality, not just an ideal in a planning document. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go back and just see if Mary Lynn Satterley is. Is Mary Lynn with us now? Star six to unmute? Or Matt Henninger? Okay. I think we had heard Joanne's voice, Joanne Nozick. Are you with us? Joanne? This is the problem, being the only level of government that's actually encouraging public participation at meetings, is it's a bit of a challenge. Joanne Nozick, are you with us? Star six to unmute? Okay. The next three names are Sharon Johnson, Trish Purdy, and Jack Smith. Sharon Johnson, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Yeah.
Sharon Johnson?
Yes.
Go ahead, please. Thank you. Welcome.
Yep, welcome. Thank you very much, your honor. I live in the Westmount neighborhood, and I've been in this neighborhood for fifteen years. It definitely is a unique environment where the houses are based on a certain design and structure and the community is built around that. I can say I was out for a couple of months before this hearing and many of our residents just simply aren't aware of the impact of this change to Westmount. And I am requesting further consultation, either in-person town hall, and if that's not possible, a Zoom town hall so that everyone can understand the complexities of these changes and how they'll actually impact the Westmount neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the lack of design standards and permitting requirements and ensuring that these structures fit in with the fabric of the neighborhood and the design. And that's just not in place at this time, and I'm wondering how that will be rectified.
Okay, anything else, Sharon?
What are, yeah, my last question is, what are the chances of this neighborhood being consulted either via a town hall or, if that's not possible, due to COVID, a Zoom town hall? Is that possible to educate and inform the residents here, which that simply hasn't taken place to the level it needs to here?
Okay, so the way the public hearing works is people speak. We don't get into interactive discussions, but councillors will have the opportunity to pick up your points when we get into debate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Trish Purdy, are you with us? Trish Purdy?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, April. Here I can see Trish is in the call, but may need to unmute the phone using star six.
This is Joanne Nozick. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Joanne.
Shall I mute it or not?
Why don't we, let's hear from Joanne. If Trish joins us, we'll take Trish next. Joanne Nozick, go ahead, Joanne.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Nozick. I'm a retired lawyer and have been a homeowner and a resident in the Armcrenton, Newton area for twenty-nine years. I have never involved myself in municipal matters before. I am largely going to focus my remarks on process and transparency and just two substantial points, short-term rentals and affordability. I am very concerned that this hearing is taking place at this time, and I'm very concerned about lack of public awareness. With COVID-19 restrictions limiting availability of information and public participation, effective communication has been limited. My experience is that people have been largely unaware of the proposal for secondary and backyard suites. And if there is awareness, they do not understand the impact. Under normal circumstances, there would have been personal public information sessions and information booths at markets, libraries, et cetera. None of this has occurred. And of course, we are having an online hearing which restricts communication and participation and makes things difficult. I learned of the proposed changes, of the secondary and backyard changes, as well as Plan B, less than three weeks ago. And that was through a friend who heard that through Facebook. This is how our neighborhood found out about it. Since then, I have spoken to neighbors, I've spoken to, written, and just this past Friday, attended a meeting with my councillor, Sean Cleary. I have spoken to the city planner, checked the internet on H R M site, as well as Shape Your City. I have submitted surveys online. I have been given misinformation and partial information, and many questions on the overall plan remain unanswered. My councillor repeatedly told me that there could not be restrictions on the occupancy to family and adult children for suites, and yet that was contradicted today in this meeting. To demonstrate this lack of awareness and input, I asked the planner at the time, three weeks ago, how many online surveys had been received? He proudly told me, six hundred, three weeks ago, six hundred for all of H R M. I understand that may now be twenty-five hundred. When the province, by comparison, completed a survey about the return to school and COVID, twenty-eight thousand surveys were taken province-wide. This equates to fourteen thousand for H R M. The Shape Your City feedback page on secondary and backyard suites has five short paragraphs, says little, and does not say who or how many participated. The H R M website and the two-hundred-and-fifty-three pages of Plan B are difficult to use. And on an iPad, Plan B cannot even be searched without creating it as an iBook. For public access, I submit that this is ridiculous. It is also not written for public consumption and is full of jargon. I have read paragraphs that I cannot understand, and I have spent twenty years drafting and interpreting complex legal documents. In addition, I heard, but maybe they're not correct, that several amendments are being planned as we speak. And the public doesn't know what those proposed amendments are. So it's impossible to be knowledgeable and make informed comments, but that is what you are asking because this is a premature hearing. I was advised that there is a proposal for an amendment to facilitate backyard suites by reducing backyard setbacks. This may not be correct, based on what I've heard tonight, but I don't know. Secondly, how can an appropriate policy decision regarding secondary and backyard suites be made in isolation from Plan B? The area I live in is within Plan B. Plan B is a major plan intended to increase population density in downtown and central H R M. The secondary and backyard suites proposal serves exactly the same purpose in the same location. Each is impacted by the other. It makes no sense to proceed with approval of secondary and backyard suites in isolation. Thirdly, I don't think council is ready. You only have future plans for looking at things such as construction noise, waste removal, public transport needed to improve snow and ice removal, children's safety related to increased street parking. It's wrong to leave these matters till after it's too late. These issues should be considered and decided together, or I think we're asking for trouble. As regards short-terms rental, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, twenty-one hundred short-term rentals, often referred to as A R Vs, have taken most of these off the market. This is not adding to affordability. I'm shortening this because I'm going to say, I refer you to a study by Megan Dalton, a Dal University professor from two thousand seventeen, that evidence shows that increased density does not necessarily lead to greater affordability, nor do short-term rentals. In fact, the opposite is in fact the truth. So increased density also does not increase affordability. And encouraging increased density in the peninsula is only going to increase costs. It's not going to create affordability. There's lots of studies and lots of opinions on this, but I don't have time to discuss anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Trish Purdy, followed by Jack Smith. Trish, are you with us? Trish? Did we hear Trish before? April?
Hi.
Hi, is that Trish?
Hi, yes, hi. Sorry, my phone was not cooperating.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Trish Purdy, and I am a resident and candidate for District Four, Coal Harbour, Westfall. And we've had a great councillor for the last twelve years with Laura Lys. I am in agreement with the proposed amendments to allow secondary and backyard suites in H R M. This issue is of personal interest to me because my dad lived with us for four years in my friend's living room. We had a very crowded house. All of our kids took up our bedrooms. The option to build a secondary suite to house an aging parent or even an adult child would be a huge benefit for homeowners in my position. I gleaned a few important points from the report regarding secondary suites that I agree with, and I just wanted to share them with you as follows. Number one, it is a gentle way to increase affordable housing without changing the character of a neighborhood, and most cities in Canada permit this. I would love for Halifax, H R M, to also permit this. It allows for gentle density increase. This gentle density increase benefits the local economy by boosting local businesses. It has the added benefits of allowing for aging in place. It contributes to affordable home ownership, and it does increase the overall rental stock of which I hear we are in desperate need for. So, in my opinion, these benefits far outweigh any of the potential risks involved. I would love to see empowerment go back into the hands of homeowners to make this decision for themselves. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trish Purdy. Next, we have Jack Smith, followed by Cathy Smith, and then we will take a short break. So, Jack Smith, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Is that you, Mr. Smith?
It is.
Welcome to council. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jack Smith. I'm from Westmount. I'd like to just make a comment on the lady who spoke two ago, not the last lady, the one before, who mentioned an online survey. I've considered myself fairly involved in this situation, you know, this issue. And I have had many conversations with neighbours, emails with the councillor, talked to staff a few times. The online survey was news to me. I'll just leave that as a point. I'm not in favor of changing the zoning to allow secondary suites and backyard suites. I'm not in favor, for all the reasons that R one is thought to be a good zoning rule for decades. A hearing to R one has kept Westmount as the neighborhood it was designed to be. I believe Westmount is an asset for the city and one that is worth preserving. I don't find the arguments in the staff report persuasive. Whatever aspirations people have for this zoning change, having on homelessness, affordable housing, age in place, at the end of the day, I think we will have just created more Airbnbs at the expense of the most popular and desirable form of housing and neighborhood. I don't deny the advantages and the necessity of different types of housing and neighborhoods. Choices that meet all needs is the ultimate goal. I think Westmount has well met its original design goal of a family neighborhood. The zoning changes proposed will not change the neighborhood overnight. But over time, just as has happened in other areas of the city, the neighborhood will change. It can be argued that, you know, the changes were in accordance with people's needs. You know, we can have that debate. But the built structure changes, the character of the neighborhood changes, the demographics of the neighborhood change is what I think, you know, happens. I know other municipalities have or are considering the elimination of R one zoning, which I think this staff report is what, and I think this is what is really going on, is just the elimination of R one. It is being proposed for the entire state of California, as I understand it. I think the proposition is that any R one lot could be used for single-family, duplex, triplex, or fourplex. It appears that we are on a similar path, the gradual elimination of R one. While some see this as progress, I don't. If it is seen as a necessity, the reasons given in the report didn't convince me. I think the reality of not being able to buy an R one house with the assurance that one, or heaven forbid, all three neighborhoods build backyard suites seems a long way removed from zoning principles designed to give a purchaser some assurance that what they were buying would be what they could count on having in the future. In that sense, the zoning was a warranty on the neighborhood. A twenty-dollar purchase from Amazon has more warranty. As an example of things changing in a way not thought of in the beginning, it is appropriately, and perhaps ironically, the notion of backyard suites themselves, originally conceived as small, basementless, modular buildings designed to accommodate seniors who were related to the principal property owner, and the units were to be removed after a fixed number of years. They have changed into something else. The original concept, I think, recognized that while they were good for the builder and served a purpose. and served a purpose, it was not good news necessarily for the neighbors.
Thirty seconds.
Twenty years later, temporary granny suites have evolved into an Airbnb that should be everybody's right to construct, and, if I can put it bluntly, the heck with the neighbors. The gradual erosion of R1 with its attendant features, not the least of which is privacy in your own backyard, and the erosion of that, to me, suggests a future of higher fences and gated communities, not something I look forward to. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is Kathy Smith on the phone with us, too?
Yes. And I'd like, Kathy Smith from Westmount, and I'd like to say that we do not work and converse on our reports here. Thank you for the opportunity to present my views to City Council. As I understand the issue, this bylaw is to apply to the whole city center without exceptions, to legalize what has been illegal additions or uses, and to address the need for affordable housing. With regard to this bylaw applying to the whole center plan, I would like to recommend that communities under consideration for designation as a heritage conservation area be exempt from this bylaw until their status is confirmed. I believe this pertains to five communities. Regardless of heritage consideration, I urge that Westmount be exempt from the bylaw for backyard and secondary suites. People in this subdivision and from without enjoy and appreciate the park-like setting on the internal paths. That was a key feature in the design of this neighborhood and has grown, literally grown, into a beautiful, personal park, but available to all. Backyard suites will seriously degrade this feature of Westmount. If you allow backyard suites in Westmount, then also allow development housing on the boulevards of the Higurstone. Now, that sounds shocking, unthinkable, a violation of the Higurstone. Well, the Westmount paths are our Higurstone boulevards, and they deserve the same respect and preservation. These suites will further degrade this family neighborhood, with excessive cars being parked where there is not space even now. Parking is already stressed. The houses on the inner loops are close to the street with short driveways that won't accommodate more parking. The roads on the inner loops are not that wide. There are no sidewalks. Pedestrians, cyclists, cars passing through will find it very congested, not inviting, with the potential lines of cars that may be blocking the street. With regards to introductory remarks from the city's Center Plan B, that plan is based on the concept of a complete community, pedestrians first, a human-scale design. We have that already in Westmount. Don't let the inevitable increase in parking or crowding of buildings on green spaces take that away. With regards to the development of affordable housing options, this development in Westmount will not provide that, and likely any development will end up, as has been said previously, as an Airbnb. If the city wants more affordable housing, look at the Airbnb numbers, their regulation, their use solely as a business entity. How much has that siphoned off affordable housing? Do you want businesses or housing for your citizens? To further provide affordable housing, could the city not partner with developers to include some aspect of building affordable housing in conjunction with the huge apartments and the condo buildings that are currently building on in the city right now? Finally, with regards to this town hall event, I hope you, our mayor, and city councillors will also consider the voices of 154 Westmount residents who signed on to the letter sent July 3rd by Ed McLean, Ted Vaughan, and Eric Thompson regarding this issue. These voices are as legitimate as the few who are able to arrange to speak to you today. In closing, I would like to restate my view that this bylaw will be detrimental to the values, history, and ethics of Westmount. In an email on July 25th, Gillian McClellan wrote me that, "For Westmount, the existing land use bylaw would likely be too small to develop a backyard suite." I want to be assured that that word "likely" will be replaced with "will be too small" to allow said development. City councillors and mayor, please uphold the values of Westmount as a community and family-oriented neighborhood, and exclude Westmount from the application of this bylaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. We're going to take a break, but we're going to go quickly, just so people can stretch and perhaps take a bio break. At 7:36, we're going to come back at 7:45. When we come back, and the purpose of this break again is that councillors need to listen to all the participants in order to vote on this, and so we need to make sure that we give everybody a chance to get a couple of seconds away. So we'll come back at 7:45 with Adam Grant, Marie Welton, and Ashley Salvador. And I'm going to ask staff if they can touch base with the, if they haven't already, with the folks who were on the list but who weren't able to get in, just to see if it was a communication error or a tech error. So we'll come back at 7:45. That's in eight minutes, by my calculation, 7:45. Thank you, folks. Thanks to everybody who's taken part. Phoebe or April, are you there?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, it's April. I'm here.
So the two people that couldn't get through, any further information on them?
Mary Lynn Satterley does appear to be in the meeting. May need to, will need to press star six on their end and ensure their personal phone is not muted. We haven't had any luck reaching Matt, the other speaker, Matt Henninger. Our team has tried and has, I understand, has left him a voicemail.
Bill, you have a question? Okay, April, we should, Phoebe, we should probably get back at it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, I'll send you a lot now.
Are all the councillors back? Let's just make sure of that.
Everybody is in the live meeting right now.
Okay, folks, we are back. It is the virtual public hearing on secondary suites and backyard suites. Before I go ahead to Adam Grant, I want to see if, give a chance to Mary Lynn Satterley, if she's with us, and can press star six to unmute.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm here, and I hope you can hear me as well.
We got you. Thank you for staying with us. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, your worship and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to address your topic for tonight's meeting, even the challenging times that we're in. And we are indeed in challenging times, and times such as this ask for leadership and forward-thinking. Allowing homeowners to add small apartments to their homes would generate some extra income for careful family members who would otherwise have to go to government-subsidized housing or move away, and that is forward-thinking. We all have seen the devastation caused by COVID in Northwood and how family members couldn't visit their loved ones, and I bet you that many of those family members would have loved to have their loved ones at home. And I can think of many reasons why the time has come to allow homeowners to renovate their homes and add living quarters. For one thing, the vacancy rate for affordable apartments, or any apartments, in Halifax is dismally low, and we need affordable housing. And your forward-thinking plan answers that call. But my reason for speaking tonight is not just Halifax. Your January 2020 report says, and I quote, "Secondary and backyard suites not only provide an opportunity for more rental housing, but they also provide more variety in the type of rental units and housing," and here it comes, "in areas where there may already be few rental options. Secondary and backyard suites also contribute to making homeownership more affordable and provide more choices for those wishing or needing to downsize." And that is where I live, in an area where there are few if any rental options. Terence Bay, which is a very typical mill to Scotia community, has none, not just a few, but no facilities, no stores, no apartment buildings, no seniors' homes. There's just houses and families that have lived here for generations, and there are very few if any affordable rental facilities. So what happens to our seniors when they no longer can care for or maybe even afford to care for their homes? Well, many move in with their families, but not all. It's always, not always practical if possible to bring mom and dad into the home, so as a result, they're forced to leave the area to go to a government-subsidized housing. And young people are leaving our community because they can't afford to stay here. They can't afford to buy a house yet, and there are no reasonably priced rental accommodations available. And we need a better plan to keep our community vibrant. We need to be able to keep our elders in our community and our young people to be able to grow their savings so they can someday buy a house in our community. And providing small, home-based second dwellings answers that call. It allows people to stay here, it reduces the outmigration, and it also reduces the need for government-assisted living for our seniors. And I fully support council's recommendation to allow secondary dwellings, and in my community, there are no negatives to such an allowance. Now, you're going to hear opposition. That's normal. Usually, folks who support things don't go out of their way to attend meetings. It's usually only residents who have a vested personal interest to oppose plans, and that may give a lopsided view of tonight's meeting, so that's my reason for speaking out, to show that there are indeed residents who come out to these meetings to show support for a forward-thinking plan. And I really appreciate your allowing me to speak on the topic, and I hope you'll indulge me, just a quick personal note by thanking councillors Walker and Adams, who I've known for many years, for their service to the city and the communities. You've been both, we've been both very well-served by you, and I wish you all the best. So in closing, backyard secondary suites, it's an excellent plan, and I urge you to go forward, and I thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. We'll go ahead then to, the next three speakers are Adam Grant, Marie Welton, and Ashley Salvador. So, Adam Grant, are you with us?
Hello?
Is that Adam? Hi, Adam Grant?
Hello, Mayor?
Yeah, is that Mr. Grant?
It is, thank you. My name is, my name is Adam Grant, and I'm a resident of Dartmouth East, and thank you for letting me talk about this tonight. So I actually have a bit of personal experience in this area. For about five years, my wife and I lived in a basement apartment on Tower Road in a situation that would be very similar to the kind of secondary suites that in a situation that would be very similar to a, the kind of secondary suites that we're talking about tonight. It actually was located on a small laneway and had a number of actual carriages, houses, were in some of the adjoining properties. So my observations from that time, I would have to say that one of the things that has been mentioned, but really I don't think has been understood, is that parking will absolutely be an issue. For the first few years that we lived there, you know, we didn't have a car, but it's, it's hard to get to Bear's Lake when you don't have a car. Eventually, we did. And although we had a dedicated parking space that came with the apartment, it was a constant battle to use it. And actually, the landlord who lived above us had the street permit as well, and it was still a constant battle, kind of, between the three of us to make that situation work. I'd also say that had backyard suites been permitted at that time, it's quite likely the backyard garden that they had would have been largely demolished, or at least in part. There would have been very limited green space between the house and the backyard suite, and it would have completely changed the nature of that property. It would have gone from being kind of a urban oasis in their backyard to being just a, you know, a, another situation where there's just a path to another rental unit. Over time, it would have changed the character of the neighborhood. One, and another issue I wanted to raise was that I didn't see a lot of consideration of the demographic consequences of the structural change. A number of cities are actually facing an issue where there are increasingly fewer families who are moving into cities. Cities like San Francisco have a population of children of under thirteen percent. Affordability is obviously a huge issue in making cities attractive to families, but it's not the only factor. It's interesting that this proposal includes a lot of discussion about accommodation for aging parents, but no discussion of the effect backyard suites will have on families with children. Making housing choices is about trade-offs. Properties on the Peninsula may have a great location, for example, but cost more and have less space. I believe few families will want to live in backyard suites or basement apartments, and that reducing urban green space and backyards will incentivize people with children to go elsewhere. So this will not only add to urban sprawl, it will actually decrease economic and social diversity in some of our neighborhoods. And the other issue I wanted to raise, and actually I've had some discussion with councillors Austin and councillor Mancini raised earlier, is that not all areas of HRM have setback requirements for accessory buildings. As it's proposed right now, there is no access, there is no setback from the property line for accessory buildings in Dartmouth. And I had some discussion, councillor Austin sent me some materials about how the building code would work in that situation. But that's not a guarantee. We should not be, we should not be relying on the fact that most buildings are made out of wood to be determining whether a backyard suite should be able to go up to the property line. Because as it's proposed right now, provided you meet the building code requirements, which you can do if you don't put the window, if you put the windows in the right place and have the right kind of material, you could build a backyard suite in my neighborhood on the property line. And that's the way it is. And I really think it's ill-advised of council to advance this without introducing standard setbacks like the four, I believe it's four feet in the centre plan across the municipality. Because even if, even if the building code said it had to be two feet, why should it be two feet in Dartmouth and four feet in Peninsula Halifax or downtown Dartmouth? So at this point, I would strongly suggest the backyard suite proposal be removed, that parking continue to be required for secondary suites. And I'd further suggest that if backyard suites are to be approved, the setback for accessory buildings needs to be added to all the land use bylaws that are in effect. And there needs to be more study done on what the effect of backyard suites in particular will have on our demographic and social diversity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, very much. Next three speakers are Marie Welton, Ashley Salvador, and Simon Hanna. Marie Welton, are you with us?
I am.
Welcome.
I'm here. My name is Marie Welton.
Welcome.
Hello?
Yep, the floor is yours.
Okay, and I'm from District Seven. I appreciate the very varied and intelligent discussion on this. I don't know enough to say one way or the other, other than I wanted to comment on the idea of local commercial on corners on the ground floor that is included in newsletter from Wade Mason, where he said he would oppose it. I feel that with appropriate controls, that this might be suitable for small business. For instance, I was thinking, where I live, it's a forty-minute walk to the shoe repair on Quinpool. I think, again, with appropriate controls and not a chain business or anything, that there might be a wide range of things to make a walkable neighborhood with promoting small business. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ashley Salvador, Simon Hanna, Kevin Hooper. Ashley, are you with us?
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. All right, so thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ashley Salvador. I'm the president of Canada Backyard Housing Association, and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed amendments. I'm actually calling in from Edmonton today. So Canada Backyard Housing Association is a nonprofit advocacy and education-based organization that promotes the development of backyard housing. So we have divisions in Alberta and Manitoba, and we're going to be expanding to a number of other provinces and municipalities over the next six months. We hope that HRM will be one of those. So I want to begin by telling you a really quick story that started actually in Halifax at Dalhousie University. So I was studying at Dalhousie College of Sustainability when I got interested in the relationship between urban growth and development, environmental sustainability, and human health. I was looking for tangible ways that everyday citizens could have a hand in remaking their cities to be more socially, fiscally, and environmentally sustainable. And that's when I came across infill housing and backyard housing in particular. So my last year at Dalhousie, I conducted a year-long research study that examined backyard housing in my hometown, Edmonton. My research was the first comprehensive study on this topic in Canada with questions looking at who is building backyard homes, their motivations, affordability implications, construction practices, policy and zoning barriers, and much more. So after I wrapped up this research, the media picked it up, and I started getting calls from homeowners around the city who were interested in building a backyard suite. They were looking for help navigating the process, connecting with qualified builders, understanding how to finance the suite, really just more information and support. So after that, we decided to hold a small workshop to teach community members about backyard suites at a local library. It sold out within a day. So we had the city of Edmonton there, existing suite owners to share their experiences, local builders and designers, as well as mortgage and real estate professionals. After that, our events grew and grew. So we formally established Canada Backyard Housing Association in 2017. Now we regularly have several hundred people out to our workshops, webinars, and backyard suite tours with over six thousand attendees over the last three years. Now, we don't build or design suites, we don't finance them, we're not real estate agents. We're a group of passionate city builders who want to help create more resilient and economically viable communities. I know that backyard suites may seem new and somewhat foreign, but I want everyone to know that throughout North America, they are becoming a standard component in residential zoning. Everywhere we've seen them adopted, we hear stories of their success. Compared to other forms of infill, they are considered low-hanging fruit. You know, they're the, on the lower end of the missing middle housing spectrum under a form of gentle incremental density. Approximately fifty percent of suites are actually built for family or friends of the owner, either to house an aging parent, accommodate a loved one with a disability, or to downsize an aging place. They facilitate multi-generational living and connect as a mortgage helper for folks who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford homeownership. Having worked in this space for several years and having written my undergrad and master's thesis on backyard housing, I would encourage council to say yes to the amendment before you today. From a policy perspective, the proposed amendments are in line with best practices for backyard suite regulations. So I really want to commend administration for their work on that. In particular, I want to bring up the buy rights aspect that's being proposed. I think that's incredibly important. In our experience, when backyard homes are a discretionary use, the risk and uncertainty posed to homeowners, it really just turns folks away. And there's an equity issue there as well. You know, folks who have a higher income can take that risk. Folks who are sort of either lower or medium income, they, they don't feel comfortable doing that. So it's really, really important that it's buy rights. And I wanted to add that if today's amendments are passed, we will be expanding our services to Halifax. Not only would we be excited to help homeowners navigate the process of building a backyard suite, but we'd be really excited to help grow an industry there. Until municipalities get the regulations right on backyard suites, they continue to deny private investments in a public good. So until cities get the regulations right, many homeowners are stuck trying to decide between costly seniors' housing and leaving their communities. Backyard suites present a third option. You know, young families hoping to make an investment in their long-term future can build right in their own backyard and have flexible space for parents, children, relatives, and rental over the duration of their lives. And finally, I want to address the incremental nature of this change. I do not expect HRM will be flooded with backyard suite or secondary suite applications overnight. This will take years. You know, this is a form of housing that is going to develop over time. You know, even in a few years, I expect it will play a supporting role in a larger conversation around diversifying our housing stock and building more inclusive cities. All right, well, that's it for me. Thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Salvador, the next speakers are Simon Hanna, Kevin Hooper, Ed McLean, and Kenny Bagnall. Simon Hanna, are you with us, sir? Again, star six to unmute and join us, Simon Hanna? We'll try to come back to Mr. Hanna. Kevin Hooper, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Who's that? Is that Mr. Hooper?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, sir. Go ahead. Is that Mr. Hooper or Mr. Hanna? Mr. Hooper?
This is Mr. Hooper.
Welcome, sir. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name's Kevin Hooper. I'm a resident of West End, Halifax, and an employee with United Way Halifax. First off, I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to speak this evening, as well as Jill McClellan and her colleagues at HRM Planning for their excellent work on this file. As most of you know, Halifax, like many municipalities in Canada and beyond, is facing challenges of historic proportions with respect to the issues of affordable housing. As of 2016, thirteen percent of all HRM households existed in a state of core housing need, meaning the housing was inadequate to their purposes, in a state of significant disrepair and/or unaffordable by national standards. As of 2019, the city's vacancy rate stood at one percent, while average monthly rental rates continue to climb at three to four percent annually. Our emergency shelters are chronically full, housing support workers have caseloads in the hundreds, and the waitlist for public housing often amounts to years. And to be clear, these conditions are not the result of a lack of effort by my colleagues in the private, public, and nonprofit sectors, who work hard every day to find solutions and provide opportunities to address these problems. The brutal reality is that in spite of our best efforts, we have been unable to keep pace with demand, and every year we lose more ground. The brutal reality is that under current market, market conditions, private developers have little incentives to build new affordable units, while community housing providers are simply outmaneuvered and priced out of an extremely competitive playing field. Something needs to change, and new opportunities, new opportunities need to be found. And while there are no panacea, secondary and backyard suites do offer a glimmer of hope and a valuable new tool with which to address issues of affordable housing, not to mention community resilience, urban form, environmental preservation, and quality of life. By their very nature, secondary and backyard suites preclude the need to clear and develop vital natural areas that remain in our city while limiting costly expansion of municipal services to outlying areas. By their very nature, secondary and backyard suites provide their tenants access to a community setting, neighborhood services, and critical social supports. They allow the municipality to pursue its goals of increased urban density with comparatively little impact on existing built form and the quality of life to local residents. They can support a senior's interest to age in place, an adult, an adult child's need for autonomy, or a household's effort to supplement income and stabilize their finances. Perhaps the most important aspect with secondary, secondary and backyard suites, in my view, is that they provide an opportunity for private homeowners to add a much-needed new supply of quality affordable rental units in Halifax. And the truth is, our sector needs all the help it can get. Finally, before I close, I just want to say that I'm a husband, a father, and a homeowner. I love my home, I love my community, and I love the quality of life that these afford. From that perspective, I totally understand the concerns that some may have with respect to this recommendation. Frankly speaking, I have no doubt that there will be challenges and some missteps in pursuit of the opportunity. It's a rare circumstance in which new ideas are realized flawlessly. But with good planning and communication, these challenges can be overcome, and they should not stand in the way of providing quality, stable housing for those who need it in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. I'm just going to loop back to see if Simon Hanna has joined us. Simon Hanna? Okay. Ed McLean, Ken Bagnall, Liam O'Rourke. Ed McLean, are you on the line?
Hello?
Yep, hi. Who's that?
Yeah, it's Ed McLean here. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. Thank you for joining us. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this public hearing. I have a couple of issues, I guess. One of these issues was raised earlier by, I can't remember, the lady, she lived in Armcreşant East. And she was concerned about the extent of public awareness of this issue. And I am too, because I sort of happened onto it. This is not something that's been put out there for people to be concerned about, although it has a very important impact on our community. I live in Westmount, by the way. Did I mention that?
Yep, we got that.
No, I don't think, well, okay. I live in Westmount. And we have had an issue with these, these things for some time because when we first became aware of what was proposed by the city, we got concerned about it. And what we realized in the end was this was the end of single-family zoning, and it was being proposed as affordable housing, but yet there was nothing. So it's essentially an expropriation without compensation. They're taking away private, privacy or peaceful and quiet enjoyment of a property without compensating us. I mean, fine, there is some apparent benefit, although it's not, in a proper expropriation, there would be a defined public benefit for taking away property from people. But in this case, it's a very nebulous thing, say, well, we have a number of illegal suites in this, somewhere in the city. They didn't say how many exactly. And my question would be, well, if they're illegal, why isn't the municipality enforcing their codes? Why, why is, why is the municipality willfully not enforcing this bylaw? Because when people take an oath of office at the city, I believe, am I correct, Mr. Mayor, that they take an oath to uphold the bylaws of the city? Is that correct?
We take an oath to, well, to uphold the, I don't know the exact wording on it, but I think you're certainly pretty correct.
Okay, so obviously, there's been, if we have a number of illegal suites in the city, which I'm not sure that we do, because no one, if they're illegal, obviously, the city would know about it and they would take action, correct?
Yeah, go on. Yeah, go on, sir. Just go on.
Well, I mean, I don't know. This seems to be, like, the talk about affordable housing stems around, a lot of the councillors seemed at the previous meeting to be very interested in legalizing what was illegal, what were illegal units in their constituency. And that was a big deal. But what is that number? Like, what impact will that have? If these units are legalized, what impact will that have on affordable housing? And in fact, what is affordable housing? What is affordable for a two-bedroom apartment in any part of the city? It's probably going to be very downtown, it's going to be more, less, but what is it? Can I, you can relate to my concerns here, I'm sure.
Thank you. Are you finished, sir?
No, I'm not finished. I'm just trying to have a sort of communication here.
Right. No, the nature of the public hearing is you get to speak for five minutes, and then council gets to weigh the discussion and what people have said. So you go ahead, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, I understand that the basis of this expropriation is that we, the public benefit is that we will, the municipality, with no cost, will be providing affordable housing and help to the homeless. So that is the public good that's being served by this expropriation, taking away our privacy and our peaceful and quiet enjoyment of our property. Okay, that is the setup for expropriation. That's the public good, dah dah dah. But what's missing in this is compensation for the
Thirty seconds.
Single-family owner. Hello?
Yep, you've got thirty seconds left, sir.
Oh, okay. Anyway, two issues. I haven't started yet. One is that this meeting, I believe, is somewhat illegitimate because notice has been put in the newspaper. The newspaper, the Chronicle Herald, has a circulation of something like, they said, forty thousand subscribers in Metro. Of those, some fifty-one percent would be detached homes, which represent forty-six thousand nine hundred people. They all read the paper.
Excellent.
Which represents twenty-nine, twenty-seven percent of the voting-age people in the area. Am I still on there?
Yeah, but I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up very quickly. We're past five minutes.
Oh, okay. Just to net this out, notification has been lacking. The newspaper is not the way to do it. My son, I mentioned this to him, he said, well, no one reads the paper except you and mom. And said, well, okay, so I won't bore you with the, how, hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two people have not had notice. If notice is going to be delivered by way of the Chronicle Herald, they have not had notice. When, Mr. Mayor, you were elected, you've got ninety thousand votes. There are something like thirty thousand people more that are uninformed of this decision. And there's an election coming up in October seventeenth, and people who are suddenly going to find out about this are going to be very upset that
Mr. Mayor.
This is happening on. A lot of people are not aware of it.
Mr. Mayor, we've gone far past the time, and quite frankly, there's so much misinformation. I'll ask the resident a question, if I may, when you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Question, go ahead. Counselor Kirsten.
Yeah, so.
We lost you, Bill.
You muted, Bill.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was back on mute. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. My question would be, did you see the actual staff presentation that suggested that there were other means of communicating and some of the consultation that was done over the last few years?
Okay, I think Mr. Campbell addressed some of that. I think they had twenty-five hundred people out of, what, four hundred and three thousand responded to some kind of survey back in two thousand eighteen.
That's all I wanted to know, Mr. Mayor. I'm just.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. McLean, Ken Bagnall, followed by Liam O'Rourke and Bill Stewart. Mr. Bagnall, are you with us?
I am.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, and thank you, your worship and members of council, for having this opportunity to discuss this opportunity for HRM. And I appreciate the presentation that was made at the start. Certainly, it helps provide some more information on this topic. Start off with, I'm very familiar with the backyard suite situation. My brother has actually lived in one for the last five years in Vancouver. And just noticing what happens in Vancouver, Edmonton, Regina, other locations, you know, the layout of their city is conducive to those backyard suites being constructed because they have backyard or back lanes on a number of streets in those areas, and very conducive to garages being converted over to backyard suites. And so I think we lack that in Halifax, but I still think there are some opportunities to make that happen. However, there are some challenges, I think, because of the layout of many of the neighborhoods. We've had lots of comments about Westmount, obviously, already. But my observations are more around expectations of distances from existing neighbors or neighborhood properties and distances from other backyard suites. For example, we're on a property that actually currently borders four other houses, and theoretically, we could have four backyard suites built on each of those, on those properties, so we would have eight neighbors instead of four, which would be, I think, a pretty big challenge. So I guess overall, just reiterate what some of the speakers had previously said, which is there does have to be some consideration of layout that may impact neighbors. There are some great areas where this would be very, very possible, and I think would add inventory to housing, but I don't think that it's really reasonable to allow these types of structure without consideration of thoughts of the bordering neighbors on those developments. So I don't think it's one size fits all, and that permissions should be granted based on having that opportunity for input. And again, I think there's some great opportunities here for that to happen, but there's others that will be more challenging. In terms of congestion, you know, just knowing our series of streets, you know, in the Quimpool, Canard, Oxford area, very congested now with cars. I know there's trying to put in bike paths and some slowing of traffic contingencies, but it's very congested now and very dangerous. We, unfortunately, we had a fatality in a pedestrian in front of our house last year, and, you know, this is concerning to add more traffic and so forth. So I think it is an issue, although, although it, again, will be different in different areas. So I'd like to see more, I guess, more input allowed from in neighborhoods or in particular developments to make sure that the voices of the neighbors are heard. And I think there'll be lots of support in lots of areas, but consideration for individual layouts and individual situations as far as how properties are configured here in HRM, I think, are very important. So that would be my main observations. And again, thanks for the opportunity. I just didn't want to repeat anything that anybody else had said today. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny, very much. Liam O'Rourke, followed by Bill Stewart and Alex Leggett. Liam O'Rourke, are you with us?
Hello there.
Hi, is that Liam?
Hello there, can you hear me?
We've got you. Is that you, Liam O'Rourke?
It is, yes.
Welcome, sir. The floor is yours.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Gillian for the tremendous presentation and the work of all HRM staff on this project, and to all the other community voices out there. I don't necessarily agree with everyone, but it's great to see so much engagement on an important issue for our city. And a big thank you to HRM for the tremendous effort to enable us all to have a voice in this process. I know it hasn't been easy, but I greatly appreciate it. I'm going to wear two different hats today. So I am a resident of District Five in Dartmouth, Sam Austin being our councillor, and I'm also going to be putting on the hat as the executive director of Lake City Works, a charitable social enterprise based in North Dartmouth, so that would be District Six. I'll very quickly say, from a personal perspective in District Five, I think this is a great proposal, and I would love to see it go through. That hat is now off. As the executive director of Lake City Works, we're an employment agency that supports folks living with mental illness on their quest to employment. Over the last number of years, we've seen increasingly that one of the major hurdles that people are facing is access to affordable housing. It's impossible to start thinking about work without access to an affordable house. While I don't think that tiny homes or backyard suites are going to fix the problem of affordable housing, I would wholeheartedly put my support behind a proposal like this, because I think it will start things moving in that direction. I want to point out that the pandemic over the last, that we've been living with for the last six months, has really shone a light on the inequities within society. I mean, one of the reasons that I'm here tonight is trying to give a voice to some of the clients that we support at Lake City that might not be able to join on this call or have access to the technology. That would be a separate discussion. And also just to share some of the bits of information that we have received through the tiny home lottery project that we've been running at Lake City over the years, and then to share another project that we're working on that would dovetail quite nicely with something like this moving forward. So from the tiny home project, we've heard from over four thousand voices, individuals who've purchased tickets from us, that there is a lot of interest in seeing something like this move forward in HRM. I'll quickly list a couple of the things that people have listed. A lot of folks jokingly say that it would be a place for me to put kids in my backyard to add some seriousness to that. Being a father myself, it's with the housing market in HRM right now, it's difficult to think about how a child that's, you know, graduating from university or leaving high school, entering the workforce, is going to be able to afford a home. So I think increasingly, the housing stock within our city is a great, great way to move forward on that. I guess the pandemic also shone a light on how we are housing aging folks. I know I'm fortunate enough to not have a parent in a situation like that, but I know if I did, I would want to have the ability to have a structure on my property to be able to house them. For folks that are currently aging in their homes, I think this offers a really interesting opportunity for support to be built into those properties. A lot of these points have been made throughout the presentation so far, but I think it's just valuable to hear them from the North Dartmouth perspective. And then the last thing that I'm going to talk about is the economic potential impact for something like this. Lake City operates a number of social enterprises. The tiny house project has been a raffle for us, but because of our engagement in that process, we've been starting to look at what we can do with the tiny house model or potentially with a backyard suite model to develop an affordable house offering to the community. And over the last number of months, we've been working with the Dalhousie Freelab to design a prototype that would be suitable for placement in a backyard suite. Being a social enterprise, we would obviously do that, engaging our clients at Lake City. So there would be a dual benefit to the community, one, creating employment and income for folks living with mental illness, and then the potential for housing stock to start being introduced across the community. I think that's about it from me, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. The next speaker has removed her name. So we have Bill Stewart, Alex Leggett, and Troy Doyle. Bill Stewart, Bill Stewart, are you there?
Hello.
Mr. Stewart?
Hi there, Bill Stewart.
Yes, go ahead, sir. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. This is Bill Stewart, and I live in the north end of Halifax, District Eight. And I'm also speaking tonight on behalf of Neighbors Speak Up. So I want to thank you very much for the opportunity of speaking with you tonight and for all your work on this particular project. I think you may be aware of Neighbors Speak Up. We're a community group, and we're focused primarily on advocating for regulation around short-term rentals, particularly commercial short-term rentals, where an owner may have several properties and may actually rent out a property on a short-term basis, full-time. In our view, this kind of activity has potential to challenge the sustainability of neighborhoods, but it also has the real potential of taking good, affordable housing away from HRM. And in fact, that's one of the reasons why we support this particular proposal for secondary suites, because it does have at least the potential to offer up some potential for good housing. But we do have some concerns that make the proposal somewhat vulnerable, at least in that objective. And that is, right now, we have rather weak legislation when it comes to short-term rentals, and also just the strength of the short-term rental industry itself. So I won't dwell on the aspect of housing. We've heard a lot here tonight about how the demand for housing is still very high. I would just emphasize that when we did a, when we had Professor David Walksmith here last fall, and looking at short-term rentals and housing, he was able to highlight several aspects of this when it comes to impact on housing. And I'll just mention one here, that he identified that there were probably seven hundred and forty units that were being used for short-term rentals, that if really were converted to long-term, might really help our vacancy rate when it comes to long-term rental. Now, our situation when it comes to housing, I don't think has changed that much. We've heard tonight how people are struggling to find good, affordable housing. And so there's still that need and still that concern that we don't jeopardize that potential through this commercial short-term rentals. Well, are they still active? You know, since COVID-19, there certainly has been a decrease, I think, in the activity when it comes to short-term rentals, although here in Halifax, we've seen a fairly level offering, if you like, of short-term rentals. That doesn't really tell us how many people are actually staying there. But recently, we've talked to a consultant, and who's looked at the HRM area, and really has identified twenty-three hundred units that are presently there under short-term rental platforms. Now, that could be Airbnb, could be VRBO, and so on. So there's certainly interest there. On another site, AirDNA, which some people may be familiar with, they look at the market and basically provide statistics on usage and so on. So they indicate that there really has been about seventy-five percent take-up on some of these short-term rentals being used. So what I'm really saying there, we still have high housing demand, we still have what looks like
Just one moment. We have lost Tony Mancini from the meeting, so if I could just ask the speaker to just hold for one moment while we reconnect Counselor Mancini. He does need to be present to hear all of the comments in order to vote at the end of the public hearing. Apologies for the interruption, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll just ask, Mr. Stewart was probably just about to wrap up, but we'll just wait a second, we'll try to bring back Tony Mancini. just wait a second, we'll try to bring back Tony Mancini. Tony, are you back?
From experience, Mr. Mayor, it takes five to six minutes to reboot.
I'd like to hear from a few more speakers before we take another break guys, so I'm just gonna wait for Tony.
Makes sense, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Whitman's asked for a break, but I'd really rather, if we break and then we have to get everybody back, I'd rather just see if we can get Tony back online and then take a break in a few minutes, in a while. Just to remind folks, what we have to do, this is that all councillors have to hear all presentations and all public submissions in order to vote on this issue, so that's why it's so important that we not proceed without one of the councillors paying attention.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, who's that?
Yeah, this is Bill Stewart.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I did provide a written submission.
Right.
And so I'm basically highlighting from that, I don't know, perhaps Mr. Mancini could be directed to read my submission, which would be a record in my part, but if that would help.
Well, if you can just give us a couple of minutes, we'll let you wrap up, I think it's probably better to let you wrap up. I think you were near the end anyway, Phoebe, were we near the 30-second mark?
Couple of more points, I think.
Mr. Mayor, yes, the Speaker has approximately 45 seconds left.
Fair point, you appreciate his patience, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Our IT folks are just trying to touch base with the councillor right now to see if there's anything they can do to assist.
All right, I think, I think you may as well take a five-minute break folks, come back in five minutes, okay? So it's 8:37, we're gonna come back at 8:42. We'll ask Mr. Stewart to hang on the line if he doesn't mind, followed by Alex Leggett and Troy Doyle and Beverly Miller. So if you need a five-minute, if you need a five-minute break, take the five minutes right now.
Okay.
Do we, do we have all our councillors back, April or Phoebe?
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have nearly all the councillors back, I don't see Councillor Hensby.
Yeah, well, fuck it.
Your mic was live.
Is that Councillor Hensby?
Don't think so.
All right, are we all present and accounted for?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Hensby is, does not seem to be at his desk right now. And Mr. Mayor, I see Councillor Hensby has returned, I believe you do have all members of council.
Okay, colleagues, we're back. And Mr. Stewart, Bill Stewart was just wrapping up. Bill, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you sir for your patience, go ahead, finish your submission sir, thank you.
Okay, as I was saying, Neighbours Speak Up is in support of this proposal for secondary suites, but we are concerned that it's vulnerable to weak legislation, weak short-term rental legislation. The province has recently brought in their regulations involving registration, that has not been very active, I think, as we all know. One aspect of it though, is that we had asked that short-term rentals, particularly commercial short-term rentals, would be designated for commercial taxation. The Minister of Municipal Affairs decided that those offering four rooms or less would actually be designated for residential tax. So for us at least, that's almost an incentive for short-term rentals in residential communities. We're hoping that your government develops its policy soon, we understand they're working on that and we're looking forward to it. We would ask that you take a look at other communities across Canada and elsewhere, and I'm sure you are, two stand out for us, Toronto and Vancouver, that base their short-term rentals on the primary resident. So there, if you have a secondary suite, they're intended to be used as a long-term rental home. There are two scenarios in which an approved secondary suite can be used for short-term rental, one, where the property owner lives in the suite, and secondly, when the long-term tenant who lives in the suite has received the owner's permission to actually do short-term rentals. So that kind of, that kind of approach would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, thanks for your patience with us.
Mr. Mayor, my dog appreciated the rest of the break, but I couldn't rush him along.
Pardon me?
My dog appreciated the rest of the break, but I couldn't rush him along.
All right. We have Alex Leggett, Troy Doyle, and Beverly Miller. Alex Leggett, are you with us sir? Alex Leggett, if you're there, star six to unmute.
Mayor Savage, can you hear me?
We can indeed, go ahead.
Excellent. Well, thank you to yourself, as well as council and staff for putting this meeting together. Tonight, I'm reading a statement from Eric Thompson, a resident of Westmount, and I'm gonna continue by reading his statement. "The Halifax Regional Council Initiative to Adopt New Policy Creating Secondary and Backyard Suites, referred to as secondary dwelling units in all residential areas of HRM, has not been thought out well, in particular the impacts that these proposed changes will have on what is known as R1 zoning in neighborhoods. It's come to my attention that residents of Westmount were not aware of these proposed amendments until earlier in this year, even though the first report was done in 2018. Tonight, an only online input session is being had and given little opportunity to citizens to digest and give input on without proper consultation. In the middle of a pandemic lockdown, we are considering the most significant change to the low-density residential zones of the municipality in decades, without ever having had a full and transparent public consultation process, which normally would be, and be an accessible public meeting. I find it most disturbing and therefore respectfully ask you to halt the process and change until proper input can be received by those who are most impacted." Eric Thompson resides in Westmount in R1 subdivision with approximately 300 single-family homes. Recently, Westmount was challenged by the widening of Bear's Road, and specifically in particular, the closure of George Daphne Avenue as an entrance from Bear's. The changes were being made to accommodate a bus road on Bear's Road and a permanent trail through the subdivision, and it reduced the street access to exit only. HRM staff prepared a report as they were called for and required in the transportation plan on impacts to the subdivision, i.e. safety and traffic flow. The report has never been shared with the community. The conclusion in March 20 was provided to the residents via a flyer by Mr. Dylan Haynes, an HRM engineer, that the remaining two compromised entrances provided adequate exits and entrances to the subdivision, and the safety of residents, in particular the children of Westmount in St. Agnes. If the new initiative be adopted by council, Westmount subdivision will have potentially 300 homes added as additional accessory dwelling units, doubling the potential number of units in the subdivision. This will change the dynamic of traffic flow, parking, and the safety of the community and the elementary schools. So what was adequate in March 2020 clearly is not today, as it relates to Westmount as a potential other areas as well, in the R1 zone. Westmount has been identified in the Centre Plan A and B as a potential cultural and heritage district. Staff had advised that the proposed changes will likely not be implemented in Westmount, but there has been no analysis of that for the community of Westmount. HRM is currently, has a few R1, or R2 zones, I apologize, which would afford homeowners additional units on-site as a matter of the right, in addition to the proposed amendment. In conversations with staff, they have had no idea how many opportunities exist in the R2 zone for increased densification. HRM is just going through an exhaustive consultation in the Centre Plan A and B with clear initiative to increase high-density development. To eliminate R1 zones via the creation accessory dwelling policy does several things. It removes important living opportunity in the municipality, the single-family home residential neighborhood. It places competition between new residents being promoted by HRM along certain main streets from the Centre Plan and these accessory dwelling units. No specific design controls are offered. In proposals, the quality of the building, the aesthetic of the streetscape, and the resulting risk of conflict in designs are significant. Creating parking issues and stress in neighborhoods as a result of no parking requirement, especially in neighborhoods not designed for on-street parking. There are no proposed secondary design controls for overall design, with total reliance on standards from uninhabitable structures such as sheds and garages. There is no appeal opportunity by neighbours to protect adjacent properties. Other municipalities in Canada which have secondary suites initiatives do have design standards and appeal process, which is lacking in the HRM proposal. Councillors will be faced with the call, and oh yes, the Airbnb use as a result of this non-controlled development. It is clear that the amount of research and detail impacted on the R1 zone of such change has not properly researched, and more importantly, public consultation is not taking place with the affected areas, as was the case with the Centre Plan. HRM can do better than this- HRM can do better than this, a virtual meeting to discuss what will become a major potential headache, which has not met an acceptable standard of public engagement. Respectfully, Eric Thompson. Thank you very much for your time, folks.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Leggett, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. Next is Troy Doyle, followed by Beverly Miller and Candice Hayman. Troy, and Mr. Doyle, are you with us? Troy Doyle?
I do see that Troy Doyle is connected. Mr. Doyle, if you can hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We hear you loud and clear, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you very much, Mayor Savage. I'm Troy Doyle, calling from District 6 in Dartmouth East. And I want to first say that thank you to Jill and the staff for preparing the presentation, giving a little shedding a bit more light on to the subject matter at hand. But it sort of becomes a bit apparent to me that there's still a lot of work to be done to, I guess, engage the public and to inform them of this particular matter. And I'm looking at comments from Mr. Campbell, who was representing over 100 residents in Westmount, who said that, you know, he did his own research. I happen to do a little bit of my own as well. And I've come to the conclusion that the research that was conducted seemed to be a little bit lopsided. I'll get into that a little bit further. I'm also hearing issues of people at the process. You know, given the outstanding circumstances that we're under, it's a challenge for sure to, to get the word out. But maybe for a, a subject that is as important on our city as this, perhaps a better time to do this would be chosen when people can be engaged a little bit more. I also want to think about what Joanne in Armidale East, I believe she was at, the previous retired lawyer, who had said that she went through some of the, the legal requirements or I guess what the process she echoed as, that it wasn't very transparent. But also, more importantly, when you try to look at the regulations, her with over 20 years' experience going through legal documents had a hard time trying to understand it. So I'd be a little worried about somebody like myself or, or, you know, a regular resident trying to go through this and trying to understand it. There's also a gentleman that, from Westmount, that mentioned about an online poll was challenging. I personally never heard of that happening in 2018. And if it did happen in 2018, which I have no doubt, but just missed it, then the, at that point, if I'm not mistaken, that was when it was to be done with the Centre Plan. And are, you still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And so, but since then, it's been switched over to the entire municipality. So I've got some questions in terms of when that online poll was done and what's the validity of it, if it was done in 2018 and when the switch-over was done to go to the whole municipality. And then also, or Centre Block, I should say. Finally, with the secondary suites, there's a lot of things that we could be studying from other municipalities. There was sort of a glossed over, I guess, view that other Canadian municipalities are doing this. There's no issues with parking, et cetera, et cetera. But if you look at some of the examples that are out there, for instance, Burnaby, BC, I'll take that one as an example, where a in-law, a secondary suite is definitely a possibility to have. But as long as you don't have a in-law or caregiver suite, boarders or lodgers, personal care or childcare facility, a bed and breakfast or other home occupations where you have in-home client services. And I think that, you know, any kind of regulation should really spell that out as well as spell out some other issues that were brought up with regards to zonings and property line. There was a gentleman from, I believe, Dartmouth East that said that there's no zoning requirements with property lines. I'm not sure if that's true or not, or if it was two feet or what have you. And other parts of the HRM, the zoning to the property line for, say, a backyard suite is four feet. And so I think there definitely has to be sort of a standardization for that. You can look at other municipalities as well. Port Coquillam, as well as Burnaby, actually require that you have a parking space that is provided for somebody with a secondary or backyard suite. And I think you should really dig into why those communities require that. Thinking of one of the gentleman's comments, who was in the Tower Road area and having problems with parking there. And I guess finally, there should be a tightening up of some of the regulations in terms of what's allowed, specifically not only just on maximum size, but on minimum size of a secondary suite or a backyard suite. And that's all I have to say. So I thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Savage.
Thank you, sir. Just going to read the speakers to the end of the list, so people know where they are on the list. We have Beverly Miller, Candice Hayman, Tony Falcons, Justin Quigley, Nick Horn, Andrew Dilly and Barbara Imodi. Beverly Miller, are you with us tonight? Beverly Miller, if you're on the phone, star six to unmute and join us. Can we tell if she's on the phone, Phoebe?
Mr. Mayor, I do see Beverly is connected with us, so perhaps just struggling with the mute. Should be star six on the phone there.
Okay. That's understandable. Beverly Miller? Perhaps we'll come back to Ms. Miller. Is Candice Hayman on the phone with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Candice Hayman, and I'm a resident of District 7. I support the growth of Halifax and the subsequent need to provide more housing solutions, however not in the manner proposed. The best way to provide more housing options is by continuing to work with developers to build this city. It is not by rushing through an unproven measure that allows rental structures in people's yards, thereby permanently altering established residential neighborhoods. There are a number of large-scale developments happening in this city. In fact, StatCan says there's $221 million of investment in residential construction in Nova Scotia currently underway. And it would make sense to wait until they are complete to assess their impact. In a province where under, underdeveloped land is plentiful and a commute from undeveloped land to the peninsula can be just 15 minutes, there is ample opportunity around us. There is also continued opportunity in the core of the city to modernize existing buildings to address the needs of the market today. Another way to increase housing options is by regulating the short-term rental market, such as Airbnbs, so that those dwellings can be put back on the long-term market. A study by McGill just last year into the Halifax short-term rental market found that these rentals have taken 740 housing units from Halifax's long-term housing stock. These are dominated by family suitable homes with two or more bedrooms, making up 61% of entire home listings in the HRM. The study concludes that if commercial short-term rentals were converted back to long-term housing, this would raise the vacancy rate up to 2.8 in the short term and bring down rent in the long term. I do not support backyard suites as proposed because firstly, you are fundamentally changing the purpose of a residential neighborhood. Let that sink in. Fundamentally changing the purpose of a residential neighborhood. That is wrong. Property investors and landlords do not share the same interests as their neighbours. This creates a benefit for them and a burden for existing residents. Secondly, it adjusts the entire property value to now include the rental income and will only be affordable to the next buyer if they too want to become a landlord. Increasingly, housing prices will be dictated by the income they can generate for landlord owners in residential areas. Therefore, the notion that secondary suites make owning a home more affordable is very short-sighted. And lastly, and most importantly, it compromises the character of the neighborhood in which the residents live and pay taxes accordingly. Residents and taxpayers have chosen to live in established R1 neighborhoods for reasons that include space, privacy, character, neighbours, viewpoints, traffic, parking, garbage and noise. If these bylaws are changed as, are passed as proposed, it will result in what can only be described as the fundamental erosion of the quality of life on residential streets for current owners. That would be hugely disappointing when different strategies could be deployed to more effectively increase housing options without negatively impacting established neighborhoods and properties. And I'd like to just say that in my immediate neighborhood, not one of my neighbours knew anything about this. The survey response rate turns out to be 0.5%, which is pretty much zero and could pretty much be called insignificant at best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hayman. Let's just see if Beverly Miller was able to join us. Okay, we'll, we'll try her again. Tony Falcons, Justin Quigley. Tony Falcons, are you with us, sir?
Can you hear me, your worship?
Yes, is that Tony?
It is. Sorry about that.
The floor is yours, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Tony, my name is Tony Falcons, and my wife and I live on Arm Crescent West on the Halifax Peninsula. It's for about over 20 years. And my comments are, excuse me, just a second. My comments on the pending proposal are very clear. With the absence of effective public consultations to date, I strongly disagree with approving this proposal at this meeting and encourage council to postpone any final vote until proper community consultations are completed. I became aware of this proposal during August. And since then, I've had the opportunity to hear councillor Cleary provide his views, interpretation and responses, relevant questions, et cetera, on this proposal. I've since read comments by concerned citizens and various reports and associated comments by city staff. My first observation is that, what's the urgency behind city staff trying to push this through tonight? This proposal represents the most sweeping change to single-family neighborhoods in HRM that has occurred in recent times. And based on discussions within my neighborhood, I can tell you an overwhelming number of community residents were completely unaware of this proposal until just recently. Having attended a community meeting with councillor Cleary last week, he too is aware of this fact. The process to communicate with citizens, both to ensure awareness and understanding of the proposed changes, appears to be ineffective and no wonder. Since March of this year, most of us have focused on the safety of our families and overall public safety. As we have experienced and have heard over and over, these are extraordinary times. Taking a pause to focus on more public consultation would demonstrate that our municipal leaders do listen and do care first and foremost about our safety, not population density. Secondly, there are unanswered questions relevant to this topic that deserve public consultation, along with more evidence to support the positive outcomes everyone is looking for. Examples. Are property owners who do not live in the primary home of the property allowed to rent in their backyard suite? Could short-term rental uses of backyard suites potentially have a negative impact on established neighborhoods overall, such as Airbnb? These are only two topics that were, that were tabled here earlier this evening and in my opinion, still remain unclear on their impact, that these are potential major impacting items and deserve, A, to be made clear and deserve some community engagement. After tonight's meeting, just simply listening to clarifying questions by councillors demonstrates the level of complexity and unanswered details, even with those close to the topic. As a homeowner in an established R1 zone neighborhood, myself and many of my neighbours feel it is reasonable to allow for more time to better understand the proposal and the opportunity to engage with informed leaders and subject matter experts in discussions on these details. I encourage council to postpone any final vote until proper community consultations are completed. And there, because there remains, simply remains too many open, relevant questions and there is no urgency to approve this evening. Thank you for this time, your worship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Falcons. Beverly Miller, are you with us now?
Yes, I hope so. Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear, ma'am. The floor is yours.
Oh, great, okay. This has been so frustrating to get on, but anyway. I guess, at this point, what I can say is that I think there have been enough difficulties and problems raised about this proposed bylaw that it should be, as the gentleman who just spoke said, it needs to be tabled and brought back again with a whole lot more information. I think it, one of the things I noticed from the very beginning was that it's all, it's ridiculous to apply something like this to the whole municipality. A backyard suite, for example, may be suited to a large rural property or a, you know, say a suburban property. But to a 40-foot lot in the city, which is where I live, and then a whole lineup of these things will change a neighborhood completely. In fact, we've seen this over the last 30 years or so in Halifax, that the R2A plan, for example, which was going to create another Back Bay of Boston, allowed, you know, more units to be built on a big piece of property. The developers bought it, crammed the property through. And although we appreciate our student neighbours sometimes, there can be a lot of problems. So to think that something like this is appropriate over all of the municipality, that it's ridiculous. And on the other hand, and this is another point that the previous gentleman just made, why now? There are thousands of questions apparently, and every one of them has come out over and over and over. Bill Campbell brought out a whole lot of good points. And so unless, I think that, again, we just need to put this table this, put it off. And as another speaker said, there's a whole lot of work to be done. And I think it would be very wrong of council to go ahead and vote on this when there has been so much good consultation tonight. And I might point to another thing quickly. The last gentleman pointed out that, or one of them, I guess it was the previous woman, that one of her neighbours didn't know anything about this. And I'm with a group who's now looking into very carefully the right to consultation about planning matters that we find in the Halifax Charter. And certainly, those matters have not been addressed. So I think altogether... So I think altogether, council can do themselves a favor by tabling this and going back and doing a whole lot of work. Maybe it will be a suitable piece of legislation. Maybe it won't be suitable for all parts of the municipality, but it may be for some. But we have to explore that a lot more deeply than we have according to what I hear today. So thanks a lot, but go back to work, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Justin Quigley, Nick Horn, Andrew Dilly, and Barbara Imodi. Justin Quigley?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Quigley? Is that Mr. Quigley?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Quigley, is that you?
Yes, this is Justin.
Welcome to council. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours for five minutes.
Perfect, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and council. Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Quigley and I live in District Eight. I'm speaking tonight in support of secondary suites and backyard suites and would like to start by returning attention to some of the important work that has been done in recent years. I'm sorry, I think I'll be reiterating many things that have already been discussed tonight, but I think it's important for everyone to know there is support behind this amendment. Anyways, since 2015, through the Housing Needs Assessment developed by the Housing and Homelessness Partnership, the municipality was made formally aware of the value of secondary suites and backyard suites. Jump three years later, with a lot of work within those years by the partnership and municipal staff, the staff report that was mentioned in the presentation recommends that barriers be removed for the development of this housing unit type. Regional council received this report and passed a motion to initiate a process to follow through with making these suites a reality. Consultation occurred. Staff has presented a series of land use bylaw changes to allow for secondary suites and backyard suites, which effectively brings us to today. I want to remind everyone about these points. Just to point out that there's been more than five years of rigorous study and work performed by staff, by council, by outside organizations, exploring secondary suites and backyard suites. And this work has found that there's many benefits with their implementation. These benefits were well explained in the presentation, but I want to point out specifically that it's a really effective strategy for alleviating rental rates and affordable housing. These benefits are not just speculation nor unproven. Cities like Edmonton, Calgary, Leesbridge, and Vancouver have worked with their provincial counterparts to use secondary suites and backyard suites as a mechanism for alleviating affordable housing, as well as providing options for aging-in-place for several years now. And the reports are out there that this shift has proven to be a beneficial component when part of a larger housing strategy, which HRM is currently working towards. I believe the adoption of secondary suites and backyard suites is an excellent step forward in an affordable housing strategy for the municipality. If the municipality can find ways to encourage that these suites indeed take a shape that assists to alleviate our low stock of rental units and affordable housing units. We've seen examples in other municipalities that landowners have experienced difficulties in reaching approval of their secondary or backyard suites due to confusion on both sides, which costs everybody time and money. Other municipalities also pair these zoning bylaws with a host of other tools that provide encouragement for certain types of rental units. So as such, I do think that zoning needs to be supplemented by a form of incentive of some sort that encourages landowners to use these units as affordable housing. I fear that without some mechanism for encouraging certain uses to be adopted, such as affordable rental units that has been discussed, aging-in-place units or accessible dwelling units, and discourage other uses, such as short-term rentals, which has also been discussed tonight, the municipality may be relying too heavily on the goodwill of landowners or the market to enact the benefits that they've identified. So I think these amendments are exactly the opportunity where we can write in these types of details and I really hope that this can happen. But despite my present concerns with how the zoning is currently written, I do believe that with the amount of work performed, as well as the benefits that have been identified, it would be a mistake to outright reject secondary suites and backyard suites. Rather, I think the opinions of those today's who are seeking adjustments to these bylaw amendments should be considered, that this form of housing option should be adopted and that HRM proceeds with the targets they support in addressing affordable housing within the municipality. Thank you, that's everything that I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Quigley. Nick Horn, are you with us tonight, Nick Horn?
I'm here, Mayor.
Go ahead, sir. Yeah, we can hear you okay. Thank you for joining us, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So it's Nick Horn, I live in District 13. Thanks for hearing my words tonight. For the past five years, I've sat on HRM's Planning Advisory Committees, advising regional council on planning matters like this one. I'm currently Vice Chair of the Northwest Planning Advisory Committee and have some personal thoughts to share today. Backyard suites have been discussed across the Planning Advisory Committee table during a few debates. With the residential vacancy rate hovering around 1%, we must acknowledge that HRM is in a housing crisis. I wholly support this bylaw and think it will help to improve housing availability. This is one small piece to our housing practice that needs to be put in place to solve it. There's much more work to be done. Watching this crisis unfold as a member of the Planning Advisory Committee has taught me that as a municipality, we must become very nimble with the approval of low-cost housing, including backyard and secondary suites. This very issue is one of the reasons why I decided to run for election in Hammond Plain St. Margaret's and one of my first priorities as elected will be to start work on creating incentives for creation of low-cost housing and the recognition of good corporate citizens who work to create affordable places to live for those who are financially unable to pay current market rates. In my view, council should address the following tonight. The limited number... The limited floor area of 80 square meters for these suites is not in line with the average single-floor area of a home in HRM. Most homes have an average area of around 90 square meters per floor. I think that 80 square meters needs to be weighed against the average floor footprint for the average home and adjusted so that it is not exclusionary or a mechanism for approving a larger floor area to a maximum of a single level in any given property should be included. Second, it seems that HRM may be promoting garage conversions. I wonder if it should be laid out that a garage converted into a living suite should have the garage door removed and a residential facade installed. I fear that people may try to just put some furniture in a garage and call it a suite. These proposed amendments don't prevent that from being done. Thank you all for allowing me to present these recommendations. I believe these changes would help this bylaw land on its feet to allow for smoother implementation. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horn. Andrew Dilly and then Barbara Imodi. Andrew, are you with us? Andrew Dilly, Andrew, if you're with us, star six to unmute and join us. We'll try to come back to Mr. Dilly, perhaps if Barbara Imodi is with us on the phone. Barbara Imodi? Can we tell if the folks are on the phone with us? And just trying to unmute Phoebe or April.
Mr. Mayor, it does not appear that Andrew and Barbara are connected. We're just trying to look into that here, but it doesn't look like they are connected at the moment.
So let's just make sure. While we're sort of here, is there anybody else that was on the list, signed up to speak tonight that we may have missed? I don't think so. I think everybody who hasn't spoken had taken themselves off the list. So let's just take a second to make sure we give Andrew and Barb a chance to get on the phone.
So, Mr. Mayor, we are speaking with Barbara Imodi. She's going to be dialing in. She's just having some trouble getting connected, but if you can just bear with us for a moment, Barbara should be joining shortly.
Yes, let's do that. Let's just make every effort to make sure that we're hearing everybody that wants to be heard. What are we thinking, Phoebe and April? Phoebe, I guess, what are we thinking here?
Mr. Mayor, we weren't able to reach Andrew, so I don't believe they'll be connecting unless they connect right now. But Barbara is phoning in. Just waiting for her number to pop up, but she should be phoning in any moment now. The only other person that I have that was... That didn't have the option to, or that didn't speak, but did withdraw themselves was Kenner. We also haven't been able to get a hold of Matt either, so... I suspect something came up that prevented them from being able to speak. Barbara, I believe, is on the phone now. Barbara, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am, thank you.
Hello, Barb, it's Mike Savage here. Welcome to council. Thank you for your patience, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Listen, I just wanted to very quickly speak in support of the proposed changes. I'm a resident of Fairview, at the top end of Fairview, and as you know, Fairview is full of grandfathered basement apartments. And as someone who's lived in this area for 35 years, I would like to speak to the contribution that the people who live in those apartments make to the neighborhood. Most of them, in my experience, have been middle-aged or retired working women who would not have the opportunity to live in stable, safe residential areas and really are such wonderful neighbors. And they can live in this area at about half of what they would pay for in an apartment. And I just think it's really important that often single women have very limited housing options. And they're just... I think it's important for them, but it has really been a very valuable contribution to my community and I wanted to share that with you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I hope this goes through, all right, and that we can expand it, particularly areas like mine, that many, I mean, the people above Alex are one and they, you know, unless it's grandfathered in, can't have a basement apartment. And an area like mine, I think, could adapt very quickly and successfully if it was opened up, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay.
Thanks for your patience. All right, I'm just going to wait and see if there's anybody else that's been waiting. Andrew Dilly? We don't think we can reach Phoebe?
That's right, Mr. Mayor, we have not been able to get in touch with Andrew Dilly using the information that was provided.
Okay. I'm not going to call for three times anymore because you have to sign up in advance. Those are all the names that are on the list. Look, let me thank everybody. It may be cumbersome and it may be difficult, but it is democracy and a chance to have a say. And as I said before, we are the order of government that is trying to listen to people through the COVID pandemic and it's important that we do. So I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move public hearing close, Counselor Mason.
Seconded by?
Second.
I'll second that, Counselor Russell.
Second, Counselor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion is, we have heard from the public. So now I'll go to council to see where we go and also to remind council that they can request that clarification if they wish during the debate. So I'm going to go to Counselor Mason to put the motion on the floor.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Halifax Regional Council adopt the proposed amendments to the regional municipal planning strategy in all land use bylaws, the exception of the Regional Centre Land Use Bylaw, Package A, set out in attachments A and B of the supplementary staff report dated June 2nd, 2020, to allow secondary suites and backyard suites accessory to single unit-to-unit townhouse dwelling size. So move.
Second?
Second by the Deputy Mayor, I believe, Counselor Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to... It's late, we're all tired. I wrote down my notes, which I will try and read so I don't miss anything. I think Mary Lynn Satterley nailed it. I think you nailed it. Poor old rentals are needed everywhere and supply needs to increase. And your presentation summarized my thoughts. And I want to say to folks, and I don't want to sound too cranky at this late hour or that I take it personally, but as a Navy brat who lived in, moved 14 times before he was 20, lots of people rent houses, folks. Lots of people rent houses. A lot of them are really good people. A lot of them are in the military, a lot of them are in the RCMP. Everybody deserves the right to live where they want to live and rentals are a big part of that. So, you know, and then further, of course, as a property owner, the only way I can afford to live in my neighborhood is we own an over-and-under and we rent downstairs. So I felt a little bit like people were talking about me and my family a little bit today. Rentals will not take away from your quiet enjoyment of your neighborhood. They won't. This is not how it works. I've lived in this neighborhood where it's about 50/50 rentals and not rentals and, you know, there are issues, but there's issues in any neighborhood. And I wouldn't say that it's any different here than when I was growing up in Dartmouth and there were far fewer rentals around. So I know that I have residents, you know, something that we all as councillors struggle with is I also know that we have residents who want to tell you what your house should look like or, you know, what should be allowed to be built in your lot. And I heard a lot of those concerns today and I think that a lot of what we heard, especially from people in Westmount, can be addressed through the Centre Plan and is addressed right now. Like this does not replace the land use bylaw that's in place, which has very strict rules in Westmount. So you're not to be allowed to build anything where you weren't allowed to build a garage right now and the garages are not as tall and not as big in Westmount as they are on the rest of the peninsula. Counselor Clary may speak to that. So today, I guess what I learned today and through this process is a lot of people don't know what's already allowed in their district. And for example, in my district, the R1 zone since 1982 has allowed multiple unit conversions. So the deep south end, along the northwest arm, every single house that was built before 1982 and hasn't changed can be turned into a three-unit building already. So from my point of view, in my district, anyway, where we already have pretty aggressive conversions and we already allow apartments, I think it's been very successful for the most part. I think there are issues that need to be dealt with. I'll just wrap up by saying that in Vancouver in 19... Or in 2013, that I toured laneway housing with Brent Toddren, the former city planner there, and it's a model that I've wanted ever since. I think it's great. I think this is going to really provide something that we actually need in Halifax and will actually strengthen our community. So I do support this and we have plenty of examples of that in the peninsula, areas like Schmidtville, where we have laneway houses that are 150 years old, or backyard suites. So my three big takeaways are to close, that what I read in the draft of the Centre Plan for the Westmount provisions is very similar to the current LUB. So we have a lot of work to do. The work we have to do on public engagement is around the Centre Plan. The work we have to do on public engagement is around the center plan. Because Marie Welton, who I'm going to email and we're going to set up a meeting and then talk to her, she was talking about the center plan, not backyard suites. And that's a valid concern, and I want to answer that. But I think we have a lot of work to do. So that's the first one, is a lot of work to do on the center plan that addresses most of the concerns we heard today. Number two, accessibility and affordability are important points. And I like the idea of maybe trying to use the center plan density bonusing for that purpose to incentivize that. And we can talk about that. And that report is due back to council sometime in the next couple of months. And the third one is short-term rentals. And staff are going to have to come forward with that report sooner rather than later. We have a pause right now where the COVID has knocked the stuffing out of the short-term rental business, but in about a year, that'll start up again. So we need to have those rules in place and address the concerns that were raised by Mr. Stewart. But with all that in mind, I will support the, you know, with no reservations, I'm going to support this proposal and that it's the right thing to do for the city for all the reasons that were outlined by people today and our staff. And I thank staff for all their hard work on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Oaken.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everybody who spoke tonight and to staff for presenting, of course. I do have some questions for Jillian still because I think a lot of people, in my own experience, we haven't gone through a center plan yet where I represent. And I don't think the awareness of this is great. And a Shape Your City survey done two years ago. You've heard me say this, and this came up several times. Now, I'm very worried about the lack of awareness of these changes. But it is what it is. But here we are. I would like to ask Jill, just for some clarification, because there's a few things that jump out at me. Obviously, we all support more rental housing available. We all support affordable housing. We all understand that as real estate prices increase and perhaps someday interest rates start going up again, that folks may be looking for additional income and aging inflation, this sort of thing. So all of these are positive and they're all great comments and things that we want to support in our city. I do have concerns about parking not being a requirement because, and I talked with one of my colleagues the other day from the peninsula, and he wasn't aware that in some new areas of West Bedford and the Royal Hemlocks and areas off Basin View, et cetera, we do have 30- and 35-foot lots. We do have cul-de-sacs where there's no place to put the snow. There's no guest parking. There's one spot for home. So I am worried about, we have this view that everything off Peninsula perhaps is a sprawling 50 or 200-foot wide lot and you can park 10 cars in the driveway and the streets are, well, pay for gold cars, but also wide. But that is not the case in a lot of our new communities. So I am concerned about parking. And the big thing off Peninsula is that a lot of the folks cannot walk to transit. They cannot walk to work. They cannot walk to a corner store. So I think parking is going to be an issue. And of course, we want to make transit better. I'm also a little bit surprised that, and I need to get a little bit more clarification because I'm more comfortable with secondary suites. And I've experienced that many times living in other cities and also backyard suites. But I am struggling with the lack of design input, if you will, that we might have on this and also setbacks. So if you could just give me a little bit of comfort on why these decisions on parking and setbacks were made. And Jill, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Jillian?
Thank you, through the mayor to the counselor. In regards to parking, the main reason why we didn't require parking is we don't want it to become prohibitive to allowing for a secondary or backyard suite. So as you noted, in areas where you're located close to transit, where you have access to car share, people may not need cars. There's also the situation where if it's used for a family member, if it's used for an aging parent or an adult child, they may not be able to drive or they may be sharing the car with the family. So we don't want to have that requirement and then it be prohibitive. If parking can't be provided on the property and there's no room on the street for on-street parking, then it's our hopes that the property owner, you know, will ensure that it's either not rented to somebody who requires the parking or those other arrangements will be made to ensure that parking can be provided. In regards to the no design requirements for the backyard suites and the setback requirements, we did try to keep these amendments simple. So we tried to use existing built form provisions for both the secondary and the backyard suites so that nothing new could be built that can't be built now and that if you have a garage, that it could be converted into a backyard suite. It may be worth noting, too, that our accessory dwellings, they can be used for several uses as well. So they can be used as storage. They can also be used as workshops. They can be used, in some cases, as home-based businesses. So there's several types of activity second happen within an accessory dwelling. So this is just expanding the type of use that would be permitted in such a building.
All right, thank you, Jillian. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Yep, there we go. I'm off mute. Thank you. And thank you to all the speakers who volunteered their viewpoints tonight, especially with the challenges that is doing this online in an era of COVID. I'm going to support this from a planning perspective. It makes so much sense. I mean, we have a vacancy rate in our city that is basically non-existent. We have not been able to keep up at all with the demand that's out there, and it's pretty grim. And adding backyard suites, but more importantly, I think, for most people, it's going to be whether or not you can have that extra unit in your house. It offers more capacity out there in the market, but it also, it does a lot potentially on the affordability piece by, I mean, generally, if it's a homeowner, then it's not going to, it's not, it's not kill them if not any of these big companies with, you tend to have a different sort of dynamic. But it also helps, in Counselor Mason's example, it helps the homeowner who's trying to pay the mortgage. It helps the senior who's trying to cover the bills to stay in the house. It potentially gives the senior who needs some young arms to shovel the snow. It helps them in that way as well. And for the most part, I mean, we're talking gentle density, down houses and existing apartments. This is stuff that fits into that built fabric of community. Use it from a city point of view. It uses our existing services. We don't have to put in all lots of new water pipes or run garbage trucks on the streets where they're not already going. This is from a planning point of view, it's a good thing. And what I've heard, I was thinking back over the last four years in Dartmouth. I actually was regularly, in regularity, I will get people who will contact me from my district saying, I could have a, how come I can't have a flat or a secondary suite anymore now that I live in Dartmouth? Because they moved from a place on the peninsula where that was allowed. And Dartmouths are one, really quite restricted. So that has come up frequently over the last four years, well before this process was underway as an aspect keeps coming in. So I did want to just quickly say on the Dartmouth setbacks at that point, it come up. I did talk to Steve Higgins in our planning department a couple of months ago, about a shed issue that a neighbor in Dartmouth was having. And the practicalities of the building code is such that you're not going to have these put in on the property line because generally, if you want a living space, you want to have some windows. And as soon as there's windows and if you're building with a combustible surface, well, then you have to back off that property line. So it's not a set setback in Dartmouth, but the building code effectively means there isn't be some space between that property line. And I know in the center plan, that will eventually, I think 1.5, might be 1.6 meters. And I assume that when we get to suburban, to the suburban plan, we'll end up with something similar. I want to close by just pointing out, and this came up at a public hearing in Dartmouth, it would have been about a year, a year and a half ago. We were having a hearing where we were looking at changing the zoning to allow an apartment building into an area that was predominantly R1. And there was some reaction of fear to that potential of renters moving into our single-family, R1 owner neighborhood. And I mean, what people don't realize, I think in those moments necessarily, is, you know, thinking outside your own personal circumstances in the hearing now. Who among us has not been a renter, you know, when you were younger in your life? And who among us is, you know, a lot of us, there's a very good chance we will be renters again when we get older and we want to get rid of that house. And so if you are someone who rented when you were young, were you a bad person at that point? And then suddenly you became virtuous as a homeowner? I mean, this, we're all part of one community here and we all need to have space in our neighborhood and in our community for everyone. So I mean, I think this is, this just makes us all stronger by allowing for more diversity in our community. Thank you very much, Mayor, wholeheartedly and support.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stretch?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to know how Counselor Austin said all that in one breath. Good points, Sam. Folks, the hour is getting late, but it's been a great hearing and the public has had quite a bit of patience with the process and we have as well. I will be supporting the motion and indeed appreciate everything and all the comments that were brought forward. You know, the funny thing is, this type of thing has been going on in some of our more rural communities, whether legally or illegally, for years. So I think it is an issue whose time has come for all residents in HRM. I feel bad that a lot of people felt they weren't given the notice or maybe didn't have the opportunity to participate. I spread it around as best I could, as we all did with the social media. I spoke to several people about it and the vast majority had no real issues and thought it would create opportunities, whether it was for their aging parents or in-laws or indeed for children coming back outside of our jurisdiction that they were looking for options. The main issue that was brought up, and staff addressed that, related to existing covenants in, you know, several subdivisions, as well as the concern that some of these would be used for commercial purposes, you know, Airbnb, et cetera. So I feel comfortable where we are and indeed I will be supporting the motion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kirsten?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I just have a very few quick points, one of them being that I will support this motion. One point that hasn't been raised by anyone in council, I don't believe, at this point is that, quite frankly, for counselors that have been here 10 years plus, this is something that many, many of our residents have asked for for a good long while. So when you consider that and the question was asked, well, why now? Quite frankly, the time has come. You know, it's amazing that sometimes if council doesn't do something, differs, we're in sort of in the media for that. But this is a process, folks. This is not something that was decided on last week that we should bring forward and have a public hearing. This has been a process, it's been underway now for several years. But to the speaker that I mentioned, well, if counselors don't even know everything about it, then there must be something flawed with the report in terms of some of the questions that counselors asked at the beginning of this hearing. Those are referred to as points of clarification and they're not really deep, deep questions. I don't think it persuades a counselor one way or another. It's something that just needs a little, as the turn goes, clarification or clarity. No one is forcing anyone to do this. For the speakers that I heard from Westmount, I'd like to address that, look, if 152 people and their spouses, I assume, are against this, that pretty well answers for me the question that there is no problem because no one in Westmount will move ahead and even look at this as a potential option. So, you know, that's using simple math and simple equation. So without sounding too flip, I respectfully say this, but problem solved. You know, my main issue, Mr. Mayor, and know there was one other speaker that I wanted to address when it was said that this was unproven. Again, great words, but that's not necessarily factual. I've had the distinct opportunity to travel and talk to colleagues across the country, quite frankly. I brought this up on a conference call today and the city SASCETUN just introduced this not long ago. It's becoming very, very successful. So it has my support. The real reason I punched in, Mr. Mayor, is just to very quickly address, you know, as someone that's been here for 16 years and see how council has evolved, particularly over the last four, six, and eight years, is the question of public consultation. Folks, I say this to everybody watching tonight. There is no order of government any more transparent than your municipal local government. You know, here we are doing this as the mayor often says, and I won't steal your thunder, Mr. Mayor, I'll cut it off right there, in that we do everything like this open. Unfortunately, if you hadn't heard of this, I say this again very respectful. Be more engaged in your municipal government. You know, this stuff is all online. It's something that motions have come forward. Unfortunately, what happens is people get involved when they know that it affects them in their own backyard or in their own. And that's rightfully so. We take our communities very seriously, but that doesn't mean that this hasn't been transparent. That doesn't mean that there hasn't been adequate public consultation. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd support this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I defer to the rest of my time to another colleague.
More like the Senate now. I'm going to go to Counselor Mancini. And the first thing, Counselor Mancini, perhaps you can seek a motion to extend past 10 o'clock, should that become necessary?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with the motion that we extend beyond the 10 o'clock hour.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you, Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to each and every speaker this evening. It's, you know, it's a topic that's very emotional for many, many people when we're talking about their homes and their neighborhoods. And I want to make sure that, there was a couple of questions asked by Mr. Doyle, who's a District 6 resident. I want to make sure they get answered, if staff could respond to those questions. When his first question was about the survey, he was asking about when the survey was done and how did that survey get pushed out to residents? If that could be answered. He asked a question about the setbacks, and I had the same question, you know, why are some of backyard suites have certain setbacks? Why are the rules different throughout the municipality? Particularly, you know, if Halifax versus Dartmouth. Now, Counselor Austin made a very good point in the concern people have with setbacks. If you're going to build a backyard suite and you're going to put a window there and it's made of combustible material, then it can't be right on the property line. So thank you, Sam, for that. You know, a number of speakers said we were rushing this through or pushing this through, and that's not the case. I think as Counselor Carson just mentioned, it's been years. I think, in fact, maybe even before I started on council, this whole process started. So it's not like it, staff started this a couple of weeks ago and it's being pushed through. There's been a lot of communication around this. I do have concerns, and I've always had concerns, but particularly now during COVID, about the fact that so many residents have not heard about this. And I know I pushed it out as hard as I could, as strong as I could into my district. But, you know, a number of people talked about the Herald, and it wasn't just in the Herald, this hearing. If you look at the public engagement feedback slide, there was lots of communication about it, but obviously not enough and not everyone hearing it. And that's concerning to me. And I already think, it's not only for this public hearing, for many of our public hearings. The Airbnb, I think, Jill, if you could respond, if you're going to answer those other questions. The Airbnb short-term rental report, I think you said it's coming back in September the 26th. If you could just confirm that. You know, how do we make sure that we are not creating a whole bunch of short-term rental properties? I think that's a concern, a valid concern by many. You know, public consultation during COVID-19 is tough. This is very cumbersome. It's very, very difficult to do this. And, you know, I believe that, you know, we should be looking at this differently. You know, we do have facilities that are available, that we could do social distancing, convention center, me and one. You know, we really, I really think we should be looking at it differently. So if you could answer those questions and I may come back after that, Mr. Mayor, a second time. Thank you.
Yeah, so through the mayor to the counselor. So in regards to the survey, the survey was live in 2008, 2018. And it was, it was one of our more popular surveys. At that time, we had received most responses to that survey than we had received from other surveys at that point. It was advertised mainly through social media. However, media outlets did pick up on it. One of my colleagues was interviewed on a radio morning show to discuss the survey as well. So we did do what we could to push the word out. We also sent a memo to the mayor and counselors. And while I can't confirm this for sure, I do assume that it made it in most of the counselors' newsletters as well to ensure that it got. ensure that it got to them. In regards to, and I just want to make sure I have your question correct regarding the setbacks, were you asking, why are setbacks different in different bylaws?
Tony? Councilor Mancini, did you want to clarify that? Okay, you having trouble there?
Okay, if the question was regarding why setbacks are different, I mean, each of our land use bylaws represent each of the community's land use bylaws for, and so you'll have different requirements for a main dwelling, you'll have different requirements for different types of setbacks and such things like that. So it just, it depends on when the land use bylaw was written and it depends on the, I guess, the input from the community at the time. In regards to the short, the report regarding short-term rentals, that is going to be coming to council on September 22nd.
Can I just stop you for a sec? Tony's indicating that he's lost sound. Phoebe, or can we just...
I'm also showing Counselor Whitman as not being in the meeting, so maybe we can just pause for a moment and I'll get IT to see if they can connect with Councilors Mancini and Whitman.
All right, folks, let's take a bit of a break. We'll do it for a break. It's still only Tuesday, so let's come back at 10 o'clock on the dot. That gives people seven minutes, okay? There's nothing you can't do. David, take care of that dog now. Seven minutes back at 10 o'clock. How are we doing and reconnecting with our colleagues?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'm just speaking with Cory. I understand that he's been working with Counselor Mancini. He's just rebooting, so he should be back. Oh, and I think he's back now, Counselor Mancini.
Okay, Counselor Whitman?
Hey, thanks, Cory. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm back. I apologize for that.
Okay, we'll just wait just one sec.
And I'm here, Mayor Savage. I'm here.
Great. Okay.
So I lost, Mr. Mayor, I lost. Jill was answering my question with regard to...
Just a sec, we're gonna wait till we go public here again. 10 o'clock, we're good to go, Phoebe? Or April?
You're good to go, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Great. Okay, Counselor Mancini had been seeking clarification on a question. Do you want to rephrase that, Tony? You've got at least twenty seconds.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Jill just answered my question about when the survey was done, how it was pushed out, and she was about to answer about why the setbacks aren't the same, particularly between Halifax and Dartmouth, the backyard suites. Thanks, Jill.
All right, through the mayor to the councilors. So the setback requirements for a backyard suite would follow the same rules for an accessory building, and the accessory building requirements will vary from different plan area depending on, you know, when that plan was written. So not only, so there's different times our plans have been written, different administrations that would have reviewed or written, or even approved those plans. And it would have been based on community input at the time as well. So there's various factors as to why setbacks are different. And it's not only accessory buildings that you see different setbacks. You'll sometimes see different setbacks for main dwellings as well.
But you see how confusing that is for the algorithm, anyhow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nichol?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, I spoke with Jill and Kate before the meeting. I got a lot of my questions answered, but I do go back and I did look at the survey, and there was a lot of great work that's been done. And I understand that this intent was in the original regional plan right from the beginning, so we're getting around to it now. But, you know, 43, 42%, you know, so sort of 44 had no concerns, but the same amount had the same concerns for parking and traffic. And I just wanted to, I'm getting feedback. That's me. I don't know if I'm hearing myself. So anyway, I just want, I know when it comes to land use bylaws, and I would have liked to seen some alignment with the bylaw simplification process, but when it comes to the requirement of a parking space, I understand about it being prohibitive at, you know, at this point in time. But into the future, you could look at the requirement of a parking space, because I just know, like, there will be people that will have a vehicle and they will rely on on-street parking. And then, and then there's the parking ban and everything like that. So if it becomes problematic in the future, that the requirement of a parking space is required, this bylaw could be amended to do that, could it not?
Julian?
Yep, through the mayor to the counselor. Yes, I mean, bylaws can be amended from time to time based on direction from council.
And I'm using that as an example and asking anything else, because I know that since I'm in this position, I changed the size of an accessory building in the rural parts of District 4, not planning districts. So I mean, so there's always, you know, it's a job well done and a lot of heavy lifting is right before us. So I'm in agreement with it, but I do realize that has problems or things that could have been missed and want to be adjusted can be done in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cleary?
Thank you, Your Worship. And I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight, everyone I've met with over the last number of months, everyone who's emailed me, everyone I've talked on the phone with, had social media interactions with, and to those 2,500 people that filled out that survey. And of course, that survey, I think it was over 90, about 92% in favor of secondary suites and 80% in favor of backyard suites. So, you know, if you factor in sort of the 30 odd people we heard from tonight, you know, it's still a huge number of people in favor. And the folks who spoke tonight, many of them, whether they spoke on one side or the other, actually raised very good points. And some of them were addressing, you know, short-term rentals, for example. We are getting later this month the report on short-term rentals, and that is a serious issue that needs to be addressed, but not one that needs to happen within this particular bylaw amendment, because most of the people I hear from are actually people who want their elderly parents to live with them. They want their young adult child to live with them who hasn't quite flown the nest yet. And I say this as someone whose 20-year-old son just moved out of the house today, September 1st, just a few blocks away. But, you know, when we think about, people mention noise and noise bylaw. Well, the construction noise is actually being addressed, and I hope residents are filling out the survey on shakereacityhalifax.ca, because we're looking at changes to our noise bylaw as it relates to construction noise. And noise from your neighborhood is generally, with a call to the police non-emergency number, addressed quite well with our current noise bylaw. And if it's not, then you can usually call your counselor and that can be sorted out, hopefully. In terms of Westmount specifically, and Counselor Mason mentioned, but I do want to address it, under the current land use bylaw, and certainly it's something that will be carried forward into the center plan process, is a 60-foot setback from the street line. And essentially, you can't build anything 60 feet from the street in Westmount. And the reason that was done is what used to be the front yards now considered the backyards towards the pathways, that 60-foot is roughly about where it is on almost every single lot where a person's house ends. And so Westmount is one of the most restrictive places in HRM when it comes to accessory buildings. In your front yard, you can't have anything but a little tiny tool shed, and in the backyard, you can't have much bigger than that either. And so the vast majority, probably 90-something percent of the lots that I've looked at in Westmount, actually couldn't have a backyard suite. You just, there's not enough room to put one. So that part is something that is already addressed and will continue to be addressed. And folks mentioned the Halifax, or sorry, the Heritage Conservation District study that's happening in a number of different areas. And I'll put this out to the residents now, and I'll certainly talk about it more when that process gets underway, but all of the Heritage Conservation Districts that we've dealt with, we've actually given more development rights, not fewer, to protect the heritage structures. And so that's something that folks in Westmount will need to be consulted on and consider as we move forward. So I'm not sure how we'd address that specific part of Westmount. Another folk mentioned Zoom Town Hall. Well, it's not Zoom, it's Microsoft Teams, but this is what we've got right now, providing the information and having public engagement. So a lot of the points that were raised are legitimate, but we are dealing with them. And so I thank my colleagues and I thank all the folks who came in to be heard tonight. We do have a housing crisis that needs to be addressed. The 1% vacancy rate and double-digit increases in resale prices, even during a pandemic, we need to do something to get more people safely housed in Halifax. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone who spoke in tonight and written in, as most councilors have already said. Lots of great feedback for us to think about and how we're going to move forward with this. In this current iteration, I do support, I do have concerns moving forward. So there's two questions that I have for Gillian that might help me in that moving forward piece. So one is, I want to just go back to the accessibility piece. So not worrying at the moment, inside the units, but what I do want to focus on is what we can prescribe, which is the access. So, you know, my concern is that, you know, somebody creates a secondary suite, maybe in their backyard, and the only way to access it is to go through the backyard. But that backyard doesn't have either a paved walkway or driveway or an easy access, say for someone with a wheelchair. So that is one piece that I'm wondering is what can we do or what we do in the future to deal with those type of aspects if we're going to be allowing this in places that sometimes might not have direct sidewalk access?
Julian?
Through the, to the councilors, through the mayor. We could develop a form of performance standard. I'm just speaking with our director to, and she believes that a performance standard is something we possibly could be implemented. This would require an amendment to the proposed, this current draft of proposed amendments, and would likely require another public hearing, but I'll let our solicitor comment on that one. But it is something that possibly could be addressed through a performance standard.
Could we, could we do to not, to not, at this moment, pause the decision? Could we pass this and ask for supplementary report for you to think about how to do that? And then if you believe, after exploring it, that you think that these things are worthwhile doing, then whenever we go through a review, which actually is my next question, the monitoring piece, then we could say, as we always, update bylaws. This is something that we think we should be doing next time we have this discussion.
Yes. So through the counselor to the mayor, yes, that is something that we could, could look at, is do a supplementary report.
Okay. What would be the best way for asking the solicitor for that?
Counselor, through the mayor to you. Yes, we could, you could pass all these amendments tonight, and then, as with any bylaw, it can be amended at a future date and enhancements can be certainly added. But that would be a separate process with a separate public hearing.
Okay. So what I'll do is after the vote, one of the, one of the questions will be, and you use the term, Gillian, I forget what you just said, but a performance standards? Was that the, was that the term? Performance?
Yes, it would be a performance standard.
Okay, all right. So keep that, keep that into your mental brain at 10 o'clock, 10, 11 right now, because I'll bring, I'll bring that back. The other piece is the monitoring piece. So what will we be doing? And maybe this is part of the supplementary report, because it's not in this one, but moving forward, what metrics will we use? because it's not in this one. But moving forward, what metrics will we use to monitor if this is working, if this is not? Because we heard from many folks that they are concerned about this. And, you know, I read a couple of reports from other places. And some of the concerns I have wasn't things that were raised, but maybe I was reading the wrong one. So I'm just wondering what, what we'll be doing, just to be able to say this worked or not, just like anything else can do.
Yeah. So through the mayor to the counselor. Now, we don't have a formal monitoring system that we would be looking at, but we would base any future amendments based on calls that we get through three-on-one that we're receiving complaints regarding the secondary or backyard suite and kind of work from there.
Okay, great. And the last, the last piece is, again, around the future of M200 and how this will relate to that, because we're still waiting to get a little bit more information from the province and more specifically around short-term rentals. And I know that we're working on that. And as it was brought up, we're going to have a discussion, haven't seen the report yet. So I don't know how this could affect or not affect that conversation because obviously, we haven't even discussed the regulations at council yet. But that is something that maybe, I don't know if it needs to be in a supplementary report, but I think at some point, we're going to need to either say that we can't address it with the secondary suites, or say we can and how we're going to do that. Because that is a concern that many folks expressed tonight. So I'll come back when we're done voting for the accessibility item and maybe if we need to put the update for short-term rentals as part of future bylaw, potential bylaw amendments. I don't know if we need that or I can just, it can be in the record that you'll include that. But that's it for me. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Julian?
I don't know if it's worth noting that we do have a report regarding short-term rentals that will be coming to council at the next meeting. So that can be further discussed.
So my only piece is, do you know, are you able to say if that talks about secondary suites in that report at all?
It, um...
That's, that's really my, the connecting piece is, how can we connect those two, those two discussions?
For sure. Yeah, we'll save this discussion for the next council meeting.
All right, great. Thank you.
Deputized mayor.
Thank you very much. Gillian, thank you so very much. The work that has been done on this piece is absolutely amazing. You guys and your team have done amazing work. This is, this wasn't easy, and, but please know it is definitely appreciated. And the affordable housing, that is something that has been drilled into my head from pretty much the moment I started on council. We need a more, we need more affordable housing. And of course, you know, housing is a provincial responsibility, but what we can do is change our bylaws to accommodate and set the stage for residents to bring more affordable housing to our city. And that's what we're doing here tonight. I mean, this is what we have been asked to do over and over and over again by our residents. And certainly, thank you so much to everybody who soldiered through the tech issues and, you know, came forward tonight to speak to us. But again, I just, you know, certainly, I have to say to folks who are against this, just because you don't get what you want doesn't mean you haven't been heard. And your voices have been heard here tonight. And as Counselor Nichol pointed out, you know, this can be amended going down the road if we do find that there are places where it needs to be tweaked. But I am confident that, you know, most of, if not all of the questions that have been raised tonight have been answered. And, you know, speaking from the perspective of somebody in a suburban slash rural area, this opens up a world that wasn't available to us before. You know, Odin, Middle Sackville, Beaver Bank, we don't have a lot of options for affordable housing. We don't have apartment buildings. We don't have, you know, flats. We don't have walk-ups. This is our option for affordable housing. And, you know, speaking from a personal perspective, you know, my parents sold the family home after forty years this past winter. And, you know, there was nothing available for them in the GBA, the Greater Beaver Bank area. So they pulled up stakes and moved to West Bedford. So Tim, they're your problem now. But, you know, certainly...
I've heard about you.
Certainly, they would have loved to have been able to stay in the community where they raised their kids. You know, this is where their doctors are, their grocery store is. It's what's familiar to them. But, you know, sadly, because of the lack of options, they, they had to move elsewhere. And so I think that this tonight gives families all over HRM the opportunity to age in place and to have seniors and maybe keep them out of long-term care facilities just that little bit longer. And so, you know, while it's not perfect and nothing we ever do will be, I think this is pretty darn close and that's why I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Russell.
Thank you very much. I'll be supporting this as well. I have heard from a lot of residents in my area about this. And, and the conversations have gone all over the place. They've gone from, let's not change every R1 into an R2 zone because, in one case, some residents brought some experience with, experiences with them from other parts of Canada where they said that it ghettoized the area, where it lowered the property values. In another conversation, there was a resident that said, well, I've got parents, and her husband had parents as well. So they wanted two backyard suites or two secondary suites, and they wanted us to allow that as a provision. It's been all over the place. There are people who just didn't want it, people who wanted it, wanted it with changes. And I see this as a good thing of allowing more capacity. I recognize that there's a significant concern about having it as a rental property, about having it as a place where anybody can rent to anybody. You get a single-family home and, and all of a sudden, it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental. I heard from, from a person earlier today who said that if we turn our R1 neighborhood, he moved into Lower Sackville specifically because it is R1, and if we turn that now into an R2 neighborhood, well, he won't have the single-family dwelling. It'll now be a double family or a family with an apartment. We've talked to a lot of people about who we are allowed to rent to. And we have no control over who someone else is allowed to rent to. What I'm wondering, I guess, is a little bit, a little bit odd. Are we allowed to say, you can have a secondary or a backyard suite, but you're not allowed to rent it? What that would do is allow for someone to have an in-law, a family member, a friend, but not get any rental income from it. So that would solve one possibility or one, one problem that I've heard over and over again. And I don't know, I don't know if that's an option or if that's a possibility or if it's legal. And it was something that, that just occurred to me this evening. So I'm wondering if somebody could address that.
Julian?
So through the mayor to the counselor, our land use bylaws can't dictate tenureship. So we can't say that this property can only be lived by the property owner or that it can't be rented. And the same, this would apply to like a single-unit dwelling. We can't say that it can only be occupied by the property owner and that one can't rent it. And that would also apply to the secondary or backyard suite. It can be for a family member, but we can't dictate tenureship.
Sure. Okay. The other thing that I've been wondering, and I'm, maybe I missed it, I very likely did miss it, and I apologize for that. We have a number of these secondary and backyard suites that already exist. When we identify them, if they don't meet code, well, first of all, well, I guess the question is, what do we do?
So, is that a question to me?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Through the mayor to the counselor, by allowing secondary and backyard suite, it provides an avenue for these legal suites to become legalized. So it gives them an avenue to actually get permits. Whereas if it's not permitted, then nobody's going to get permits.
So if there is, if there is a suite that is 100 square meters, it wouldn't be allowed as a backyard suite or a secondary suite. So it would remain to be illegal.
To attain a proper permit, they would have to make the suite smaller.
Okay. All right. Thank you again for all of the hard work. Thank you to all of those who we heard from this evening in the, in the public presentation. There are, sometimes when we try and reach out to people, where we try and reach out in every avenue possible, thirty years ago, that was easy. You put a notice in the newspaper and everybody sees it. Or you put it on one of the two TV channels that we had when I grew up and everybody sees it. Nowadays, we have so much streaming media that people don't pay attention to mainstream media. And so it's much harder to get the word out about where something is. So we're doing our best to get out to people. I'm doing my best to reach out to people on an individual basis. And we will continue to try harder and to get to everybody we can and every, in every means we can. But thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hensby.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. This has been a long time coming. And as Counselor Carson has said, he thinks it's been sixteen years. Well, I can tell you, this was raised by the very first council. It was Council Barry Burnett who raised the issue back then, perhaps we should just change the R1s to R2s. It was back then, we talked about trying to harmonize and bring up to date all our municipal planning strategies. And that was the impetus for the regional plan. And now we finally come here, twenty-plus years later to this day. And I want to thank the municipal staff that did all this hard work and planning and getting all this information together and tried to find a solution that would be best for all of Halifax, regional municipality, urban, suburban, and rural. I can tell you that from the communications, I can tell you that it appeared in our cooperator, the full-page ad for this public hearing, was out over a week ago. So people have more than enough time to sign up. It also appeared in my newsletters of August 2020 and March of 2020, when we first had the survey. And we also had the pop-up session on Muscadaba Harbor. And I flooded every Facebook page in my district about the survey. I want to make sure people had an input opportunity for this because this issue is important for rural Halifax. We talked about the sustainability existence of our rural communities and trying to maintain a population base. This will help. We have too many seniors, hate to say it, moving to break your drive, sorry, Bill, but they want to make sure they stay in their communities. And this is one way they can do that by making it affordable for them to have family or to have someone to live with them or to rent out. It also adds to the local rural economy, perhaps for Airbnb and other things like that. Whatever the case may be, let's find a way to accommodate this as much as possible. I want to thank the staff very much for this. I also know it's a divisive issue in certain parts of the municipality, but it's not perfect, but we're getting there, getting on the way to it. And if there's any members necessary in the future, then so be it. But I'm supporting this tonight. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else on the list. Anybody else wanting to speak on this?
Call to the question.
Ready for the question, colleagues? Ready for the question?
Question.
Counselor Scott?
Or the motion?
Counselor Smith? Counselor Krista?
Or the motion?
Counselor Nichol?
In favor.
Counselor Austin?
In favor.
Counselor Menzey?
In favor of the motion.
Counselor Mason?
He put his thumbs up, I think.
He's two thumbs up.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
In favor.
Counselor Cleary?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
For.
Counselor Zeroski?
For the motion.
Counselor Whitman? Deputy Mayor Blackburn?
Voting yes on the motion.
Counselor Russell?
In favor.
Counselor Outtitt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Whitman's a yes.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor?
For the motion. So the motion is carried, colleagues. And thank you for the debate. And again, we thank everybody who took the time to join us tonight, to have their voice heard. And we appreciate everybody's patience. But, you know, this is the best public process going these days, and we'll only try to make it better. So thank you. Thanks, everybody for that. Was there something else, colleagues, tonight? Counselor Smith, perhaps?
I was waiting for my computer. So I just sent in my email is, I have the spinning wheel of death. So I just sent a quick sentence to Gillian and Kelly Denti to look at. So I'm wondering if we can take like a minute or so and give them a chance to look at the supplementary report. Or I can read it and we can do it. I don't, I can't think right now.
Linda, why don't you copy and paste it and put it in the chat?
I can, but I just, I want to give them a chance in case it's ridiculous and they can, they could, they could fix it. So I'm wondering if we can just give them two minutes or so just to take a peek at it.
At 10:30 at night, it's not likely ridiculous.
No, not really a point, suggestion. I wonder, Counselor, if you couldn't bring it forward next week. I'll tell you, supplementary...
That's fine.
Because it almost sounds like it's a separate motion anyway as opposed to supplementary to this report. So that's just my input.
Whatever, whatever works, honestly.
All right, maybe that's for the best then. If that's okay with you, Counselor Smith?
Yep. So then, would I bring it as a notice of motion to the next meeting? And then the meeting after that, we'd have the discussion.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think if he emails it in as notice of motion right away, you could consider an agenda setting. It could be on the next meeting.
That's right. We'll do that. And I think also, if folks will entertain, I know Deputy Mayor had Denti read. And do you have a notice of motion, Deputy Mayor?
I did, yes. It was a late-accepted notice of motion. But if I, if, with your kind indulgence, please take notice at the next meeting of the Halifax Regional Council to be held on Tuesday, September 22, 2020. I intend to move a motion to request a staff report on allowing market gardens in all areas of HRM. The goal is to allow all areas of HRM to permit the growing of produce, not only for personal use, but for sale at local farm markets, similar to what is permitted under the center plan and in Vancouver.
Okay, that's, okay. I think, Phoebe, we can accept that with the indulgence of all council members. Okay. Colleagues, you can take Thursday night for other activities. Maybe you want to watch the Bruins. Oh, can't watch the Bruins anymore, sorry. But whatever happens, you can do that on Thursday night.
Oh.
You can watch the Bruins if you have the Golf Channel. Colleagues, it's been a long day, but a very productive day.
May I move to adjourn?
Just before you do, Counselor Nichol, I appreciate that. But I do want to just once again show our appreciation to the staff on a whole host of issues today. We thank them. There was a couple of things that came in late, like the infrastructure piece, but it was well put together. We thank our staff and we thank our CIO for the hard work. And I thank all of you for your indulgence. And I really want to thank the people who came out for the public hearing and encouraged them to come back again. Thank you all very much. I'll accept a motion from Counselor Nichol to adjourn. We're back on the 22nd of September. And keep an eye out. We're going to have a look at the schedule over the next little while and they have to make some adjustments. Thank you.
Bye-bye.